Habad Community Center. I'm not Jewish, but I have a rabbi, and this is he.
Thank you very much, dear mayor, my dear friend, which everyone calls you dear friend, for the opportunity to offer today's invocation. Let us pray, Almighty God, master of the world, we ask that you bless our mayor, city manager, and all the honorable members of the city councils with ears to hear, eyes to see, hearts to feel, and hands to help. Grant them the wisdom to turn adversity into opportunity, to transform the challenges we face today into seeds from which will sprout the growth of tomorrow. Bless these distinguished individuals chosen by thousands of people who have placed their faith and confidence in them to make laws and decisions for them and their families. Bless them with joy of life, good health, good cheer, profound insight, and boundless compassion and concern for all mankind. Provide them guidance so that they will always be conscious of your presence and recognize that by laboring for the enactment of just laws to ensure a peaceful and moral society, they are fulfilling one of the seven universal laws given to us by you, Almighty, at the dawn of civilization. You commanded all humankind to believe in a one God, respect life, respect property, respect family, respect your holy name, respect of all living creatures, and finally, that every society be governed by just laws which are based in the recognition and acknowledgement of you, oh God, as the sovereign ruler of all men and all nations. May our great Oklahoma City serve as a beacon of light for people of all faiths and walks of life and help achieve the goal so powerfully stated in our pledge of allegiance that America truly be one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As the esteemed members of this convocation consider the great responsibilities they have for their fellow citizens, as they reflect on the sacred trust they possess and the very high hopes they carry, let them also know that they do not bear this awesome burden alone. As it says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and do not lean on your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge God, and God will make straight your paths." And through their faithful efforts, may this verse be fulfilled. But let justice swell up like a river, righteousness like an unfailing system, stream. Father in heaven, allow me the privilege of echoing one of the traditional blessings my mentor and teacher, the leader of world Jewry, the Lubavitch Rebbe of blessed memory, who had offered to one and all at this unique time of the year, being less than a month away from the Jewish people, from when the Jewish people of the world all over will be celebrating Rosh Hashanah, the world's birthday. May we all be blessed with a good and sweet here. May he who makes peace in heaven bestow upon peace upon us and all of his children, and let us say amen.
And now Councilman Ed Sheedee will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is to do the pride of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Please be seated, and I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we will open with items 3A and 3B off the office of the mayor, and I will migrate to the front to handle those items. Good morning. If Robin wouldn't mind joining. There she is. Every month, we like to recognize our city's Employee of the Month, who symbolizes all of our 4,500-ish employees that we are so proud of. And this morning, we are joined by Robin Locketon, if I get that right. Okay, good. Who is our August 2018 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month, and if the clerk would please read this resolution.
Whereas Robin Locketon has been a city employee for nine years and is an administrative coordinator in the MAPS office. Whereas Robin's duties include routing items for four MAPS, three subcommittee meetings, printing and distributing agendas, and promptly preparing minutes for each meeting. Whereas Robin always ensures conference rooms are clean and ready for meetings, even providing ice water for attendees. Robin is proficient in bid sync and sire and consistently routes agenda items promptly to meet deadlines. Robin is always willing to take on additional tasks when coworkers are out of the office or need assistance. Whereas Robin Locketon is currently a member of the Municipal Leadership Development Program and participates in the Heart of the City Campaign each year, volunteering for the MAPS Office Silent Auction. Whereas this council desires to recognize Robin Locketon for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Robin Locketon, August 2018, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Thank you very much, clerk. And Francis, I imagine that reading that someone is consistently routing agenda items promptly is kind of a thrill for you. That's, yeah. That is the definition of success in our clerk's world. So, you know, a little later in the program today, in our agenda, we're gonna hear about what the citizens think of our city services. And spoiler alert, they are very appreciative and like them very much. And it is really a testament to the work of you, Robin, and all of your colleagues in the city, and so we're so grateful for you. And having said that, this is actually a resolution, which means that it requires a vote. And so now we're gonna really test how loyal and, I mean, how grateful we are. So, so let's see. Could I get a motion in a second? We've got a motion in a second. If everybody would cast your votes, and let's see. Passes unanimously. You are the employee of the month. Yeah. Would you like to say a few words, Robin?
I work with a great group of people, and I love working for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We love that you work for the city, too. So, thank you very much, Robin. And by the way, aren't you joined by some family members today?
My son, Brandon, and my husband, Jeff.
Very good. Brandon's in his Dodgers jersey. We like that. So, yes, welcome. Well, thank you, Robin. Let's give Robin and all of our city employees one more hand. Well, this week marks a pretty important, I think, anniversary in our city's history. Something pretty important happened 60 years ago this coming Sunday. And to recognize that, I'd like to invite the, there's a planning committee for the recognition of the 60th anniversary of the Katz Drugstore sit-ins, and I would invite that planning committee to join me up here. I never know whether to stand in front of the podium or behind it. Well, let's stand next to it. We'll try that. Here, Marilyn, join me over here. You might get blocked there. They're okay. So, there's a lot of history here. We've drafted a resolution to recognize that, and maybe that's a good place to start. So, why don't we, why don't we hear about why we're here this morning? And clerk, if you would please read the resolution.
Whereas on August 19th, 1958, schoolteacher Claire Looper led a courageous group of young people to Katz Drugstore on Main Street in downtown Oklahoma City and conducted a sit-in to change the policy at Katz that did not allow African-Americans to be served lunch at the counter. Whereas Claire Looper was joined by a handful of adult chaperones and over a dozen original sit-enters who were members of the local NAACP Youth Council and ranged in age from six to 17. Whereas even though the participants were trained in nonviolent protest, a tactic such as this was a dangerous approach in a time when segregation and Jim Crow laws still dominated in Oklahoma and elsewhere. Whereas Katz Drugstore eventually changed its policies in response to the sit-ins. In June of 1964, the Oklahoma City Council passed an ordinance banning racial discrimination at places where food is served. Whereas Claire Looper's success was reported nationally through the NAACP and inspired later activism in Greensboro and elsewhere, and sit-ins became a key tactic in the civil rights movement of the 1960s that led to many important changes and civil rights improvements across the nation that extended well beyond the policies protested at Katz. Whereas Claire Looper continued her work in Oklahoma City, leading sit-ins and other protests for many years following the events of August 19, 1958, and she was arrested 26 times for her civil rights efforts. And upon her death in 2011, The New York Times called Claire Looper "a seminal figure in the sit-ins of the civil rights movement." Whereas in Oklahoma City, Northeast 23rd Street is known as the Claire Looper Corridor, and it is considered important by this council to recognize the incredible achievements that were sparked on August 19th, 1958, the positive effect it had on Oklahoma City, and the inspiration it gave to civil rights activists around the nation. Whereas it is hoped that the courageous actions of August 19th, 1958 continue to inspire us in Oklahoma City to stand each day for a more just society, and this council stands ready to work with interested parties in the future to permanently commemorate the site of the 1958 sit-in. Whereas each year, Claire Looper staged a Freedom Fiesta celebration to celebrate the city's civil rights achievements. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that on the 60th anniversary of the Katz Drugstore sit-in, that they do hereby thank and commend Claire Looper and the original sit-enters of August 19, 1958, and in honor of their legacy, does hereby proclaim August 14 through August 19 to be Freedom Fiesta Week in Oklahoma City.
Well, there's a few people I want to hear from. Joyce, would you mind introducing, first of all, everybody that's on this committee that's up here today?
He's making me the chairperson. With us, we have first the young lady who said in their meeting, NAACP youth meeting, "Why don't we just go down there? And let's just make them service?" That was the essence of her message. And that statement, that question, was no other than Marilyn Looper Hildred, the daughter of the late Clara Looper. The mayor asked who was the chairperson of this planning. We told him we have no chairpersons. We're all chairpersons, because this is truly a historical day. We also have Joyce Jackson. She serves as our media director, but again, she was a participant in the sit-in. Marilyn was one of the original 13, but the rest of us were participants, so we have Joyce Jackson on this committee. So, let's give her a hand. JB Williams, he's the youngest. And we say, if we don't tell our story to young people, if we don't tell our history, history may repeat itself. So, we're so happy to have JB Williams, who is a rapper. He has so many titles. We didn't know we were with a VIP person, but JB is also on this committee. And everything starts with prayer, and the faith community was certainly a part of the sit-in movement. So, we have the great Reverend J. A. Reed, the pastor of Fairview Baptist Church, and he has been a pastor over 50 years. He participated in the sit-in. Also, he did some things in Stillwater. So, his history goes back to Clara Looper, and he tells the story that Clara Looper was the only lady who could call his house and talk about him to his wife, and he took it. So, we are so happy to have Reverend J. A. Reed. And last but not least, many of you might have read in the paper, the University of Oklahoma named a department after Clara Looper. It's called the Department of African and African-American Studies. We have the chairperson of that department from OU serving on this committee, Dr. Carlos Hill. Now, yours truly was a student of Clara Looper at Dungy School. And I tell people, we had Clara Looper every day, and we had her on Saturday. So, we were glad not to have her on Sunday. But I can assure you that every moment we had with her, priceless moments. And we want to thank you, mayor and city council, for this tribute. We cannot say enough, under the leadership of Clara Looper, if it had not been for Clara Looper, where would we be today? So, we take pride, and we are honored to plan the 60th anniversary. Kicks off Thursday at the Oklahoma History Center. Friday, we will be at the Fairview Baptist Church. It's at 6 o'clock. Thursday at 7 o'clock. Saturday morning, we're gonna do a reenactment of the sit-in. Some of you may want to join in, because one thing we emphasize, blacks and whites march together in order for this achievement to take place. But when we say, "You want your freedom, you want your freedom. Yeah, you're gonna walk." Yeah, we want to reenact that on Saturday morning. Saturday evening at 7 o'clock at the renewed Paige Woodson Auditorium, now called Auditorium at Douglas, and we're saying the old Douglas High School, just a little bit of history. That's at 7 o'clock. And the final program on Sunday at 6 o'clock PM at Fifth Street Baptist Church. That's the home church of the late Clara Looper. And we have as our guest speaker, the Reverend Amos Brown. He's the pastor of Third Baptist Church, San Francisco, California. So, if you can't attend all four events, try to make at least one. And we invite all sit-enters to be there every day, because history cannot repeat itself. And we are so proud that we're able to be in this room together and reflect 60 years ago. If it had not been for Clara Looper, where it would be. Thank you.
And I also wanted to acknowledge, we've got so much leadership from the northeast community in here this morning. I've seen folks from Millwood and the Black Chamber and more members of the faith community. And also, he just walked out, so you'll have to tell him, but I saw Representative Jason Lowe. I see Senator Anastasia Pittman. I see Representative George Young. And grateful for all of you having joined us for this momentous morning here at City Hall. And I'm going to move, this is a resolution, so as you saw earlier, there's a bit of a cliffhanger here. But I'm gonna hold that for a moment and ask Marilyn if you wouldn't say a few words, and we're honored to be in your presence this morning.
Thank you very much, mayor. On behalf of my mother that sleeps in Yonder's grave, on behalf of the thousands of young people that walk the streets of Oklahoma City to make Oklahoma a better place, on behalf of our Oklahoma City Police Department, who worked diligently so that Oklahoma City would not have the violence that other cities have, I say thank you. I say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Because if the young people in Oklahoma City had not sat down against injustices and prejudice, then the young people throughout this country would have never stood up. So, I want to thank the committee who thinks enough of my mom to keep the legacy going. And I want to thank you, because if you know anything about the history of Oklahoma City, you know that the sit-ins were not made up of people that have. They were made up of the have-nots. So, we're always grateful to everyone for whatever role they played in the movement, whether it was a prayer, helping us get out of jail, whatever. We say thanks to you. And to the greatest city in America, Oklahoma City, we're not where we need to be, where we are long ways from where we are.
You're not done yet. You're not done yet. We're not leaving. We're standing for you. You thought we were leaving. That was their standing ovation, is what that was. Councilman Cooper, if you wouldn't mind, I'd welcome you to make a few remarks, and then at the end of that, you might have a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm excited about this occasion, uh, to thank and recognize the 60th anniversary of Oklahoma City to take its rightful place in history, that the sit-in movement started here and not elsewhere. And so, it is with great pride that I stand, because others were willing to sit. And today, I move that this resolution be passed.
A motion from Councilman Cooper and a second from the entire council. And why don't we cast our votes? Passes unanimously. It's Freedom Fiesta Week in Oklahoma City. I want you to know, I never would have come up with Freedom Fiesta. I asked Marilyn and Joyce a couple weeks ago, I said, "What should we call this? You know, Civil Rights Week or Katz Sit-In?" We can say, "Oh, well, it has to be Freedom Fiesta Week." That was what it was. And I said, "Well, so it shall be." So, so again, thank you so much. This is, this is a morning we will all long remember, I think, that you guys were up here and were so honored, and we look forward to the commemorations this weekend. And I want to drive home a couple points that were made in that resolution about making sure that this continues, this event continues to inspire us as we move forward, and also that we find a way to permanently commemorate the site of the sit-in, where it occurred in downtown Oklahoma City. So, one more standing ovation for this crew. All right. We will now move on. We are on item four, Journal of Council Proceedings. We've got items 4A and B. I would entertain a motion. We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we have item five, Request for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. Couch.
Mr. Mayor, starting on page 19, under item 9I1. Item B, 2115 North Jordan, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item D, 2601 West Park, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item H, 1509 Northeast 17th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 1337 Southwest 26th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving on, still on page 19, to item 9J1B, 2115 North Jordan, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item D, 2601 West Park, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. And item H, 1509 Northeast 17th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then moving to page 23, under Claims for Denial, we ask that we strike item 9S1B, 9S1B on page 23.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item six, Revocable Permits. Item 6A, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with American Cancer Society to Hold Run for Hope OKC on August 25th along Northeast 10th Street between North Stonewall and North Phillips. And we have Jane Meyer has signed up to speak. Jane, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Sure.
Yeah, pull that mic up. Thank you.
There you go. My name's Jane Meyer. I'm on behalf of the American Cancer Society. Our address is 6525 North Sheridan, Oklahoma City. And I'm here to request a permit for Run for Hope. It is a new event for the American Cancer Society. It's a 5K held in the OU Health Sciences Center, and it would be benefiting the American Cancer Society, and it'll be held on the 25th of August.
Okay. Councilman Cooper?
Any comments from council? I'm excited about to support the run and move for approval.
We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thanks for coming down. Have a great event.
Thanks.
And now we have 6B, Revocable Permit with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and Friends of Multi-Sport to Hold the Red Man Triathlon and Half Triathlon and Friends of Multi-Sport to hold the Red Man Triathlon and Half Triathlon on September 22 at Lake Hefner. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion from anybody, but particularly Councilman Griner, Councilman Shadid, or Councilman Stonecypher.
Vote for approval.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I do understand this has become quite a major event.
It has been through the ground over the years.
Yeah. Seeing no discussion, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to page 2 on the agenda, and we will recess our city council meeting. We now convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, and we have Items A, B, and C. Item B had the potential for executive accession, I assume we do not need that, Kenny? Okay, then I'll take one motion to approve all three items.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will now adjourn the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. And here we have Items A, B, C, D, and E. We can take that as one motion. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We now adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. We have two items here, I would consider a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We now adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the city council, where we find ourselves at Item 7, The Consent Docket.
Move those items subject to individual consideration.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any item? I know that we've got a presentation for AY.
Yes, several. We have AX and Y, and also I need some clarification on AG.
So it was AX, right? And AY, and then what was the other one?
Kids Corral, the Zoo, and Girl.
Okay. So AX and AY, that was it?
The director here that's gonna...
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, I have 7P.
AQ.
All right. If that's it, we'll take it in order, I suppose, and that means that Item P, just to... Do you want me to come back? Do you want me to come back to it?
No, I did want to get back on my phone. I think I can do this without my phone, but I was gonna be a little bit more specific. 7P is our annual list of social service grants that are being provided. We've talked about this a lot. These are small grants, mostly focused on emergency housing. But the reason I was gonna run to get my phone is that I had asked a couple of weeks ago that the city manager put together a list of all of the general fund budget items that we fund in the, oh, thank you, in the area of social services. And I am now being provided with a copy of that. But the bottom line is that that number totals in excess of $20 million. And so, well, from our social services committee, which I would like to recognize Councilman Shadid and Councilman Greenwell for working on this, we've all talked for years and years about increasing those numbers, and I know that staff is working to try to help us identify some additional areas in which we can be helpful. And I also want to say that we are working specifically with the Homeless Alliance and a coalition of folks to try to help stabilize funding at the West Town campus and for the Resource Center. But the numbers are really impressive, and are, many of them are grants, many of them come from faith-based organizations and other partners, many of these funds are in kind, but the total dollar amount that our city focuses on helping, as Rabbi said, those of greatest need, those in most need of support, is $22,285,000. And so I just want to, you know, say that, well, this agenda item may look insignificant in the general course of a 420 or so million-dollar general fund budget. We do have many resources directed toward these needed services, and I want to thank our staff for continuing to highlight these and to bring them to our attention. Again, as I think Clara Lupa's daughter said, we're a great city, we're not where we want to be, but we're a lot further along than we've been before. And so I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, manager.
I think the next thing that was requested to discuss was Item AG. Councilman Cooper?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I know that this was originally negotiated with the Harrison Walnut Redevelopment Agency. On this particular TIF, how much longer is left on Number 7? Question 1, the pilot is capping this at $50,000, I believe, until the end of that TIF. Just how many years is that?
I believe TIF 7 expires in 2032.
In 2032? And so we're capping this now at $50,000 until 2032?
Right.
And then can you just share with us the agencies that are custodians now? Is it a cure? Is it the redevelopment agency? Who is actually the custodian now?
Sure. When TIF Number 7 was approved by the city council, the project plan designated the Oklahoma City Redevelopment Authority as the public entity to carry out the plan. So the Redevelopment Authority has had that responsibility since, you know, about 2007, when the TIF was created. This particular project was for the development of the Toby Keith Kids Corral. We used about, I think about $250,000 to $300,000 in TIF revenues to help that project happen. We provided infrastructure needed for the building, water and sewer line extensions, and then they agreed as a covenant on the property to make a payment in lieu of taxes, which is what we do in TIF 1 and TIF 7 with all of the nonprofits that are located there that receive TIF assistance. So they make a payment in lieu of taxes back to the Redevelopment Authority to help repay that money that we put into the project originally.
Okay, and what happens at the end of the TIF?
The money is available to carry out the rest of the initiatives in the project plan.
But the pilot goes away?
The pilot goes away.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to AQ. Councilman Griner?
Yeah, this is a $200,000 grant from the United States Department of Interior and Oklahoma Department of Tourism and Recreation to be used for the adaptive baseball field that's going out at Route 66 Park. I have in my notes that the total construction was gonna be 1.2 million, so this $200,000 is a, will be a big chunk of that, so I just wanted to highlight that item.
Thank you. Councilman Cooper, you wanted to talk about AX, and then we'll get into the presentation of AY.
Yes. Well, actually, I believe, Dwight, are you gonna talk about AX and A1? Okay, I believe the presentation, they're gonna talk about both of those in the presentation.
That sounds great, and thank you for inviting these folks down today.
Well, it's important for us to hear, and I think it's a significant presentation for us.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Dwight Lawson, 2101 Northeast 50th Street, Executive Director of the Zoo. Appreciate the opportunity to give you a little bit of background on AX, the third amended and restated lease agreement, operating agreement with the zoo, and then preface a new sublease that we're looking at, AY, on the agenda that we're particularly excited about. So for the lease and operating agreement, just a little bit of history, the current operating agreement runs through June of next year for a number of reasons. We want to go ahead and restate that and extend it. You can see some of the history there with the previous operating agreements, originally in 1975, extended for 10 years, out to 2064, and then in 2005, the zoo borrowed some money, and the lease was tied to the payoff of that, which is next year. In the meantime, the Remington sublease was done and extended, and will presumably be extended again. It currently runs through 2023, so we have various overlapping operating agreements and lease durations going on right now. Also, for the last two or three years, we've been undertaking kind of a mapping project, what, you know, where are all these properties that have been pieced together over the years, and are the boundary lines clean and everything? And for the most part, it's pretty good, but we identified a couple of areas, particularly the eastern and southern boundary of the zoo with Lincoln Park Golf Course, where there were a couple of inconsistencies or historical overlaps or things that were handed over but maybe not officially recorded through council and all. So there's a couple of areas to clarify. The current property description has the zoo's line running through the middle of the emergency management property and things like that, so nothing really contentious, but a good opportunity to go ahead and resurvey and provide a clean property description. So we did that over the course of the last year to tie up these little areas around the southern and eastern border, and so we've proposed a third amended and restated lease and operating agreement that runs through 2093 to encompass the existing and new subleases. We've got the new boundary survey in there, and then the one material change that we actually made to the lease agreement itself is around the animal management clause. There were some kind of archaic procedures in there with animal funds and things like that that aren't current practice, and so we've simplified that to basically say that we're going to manage the animal collection in accordance with the standards of our accrediting body, the Association of Zoos and Aquarium, that have a pretty strict and evolving set of standards around how that's done and what's allowed and not allowed. And so this was approved by the zoo trust in July, if you got the next one, and not that you can see it from this presentation necessarily, but those are the updated surveys. The Remington Park property, because it's a more recent sublease, is clean, and they've refinanced as well in the last year or two, so they've got a good description. And then to the right there is the new zoo property boundary, and essentially what we did is just had the existing perimeter fence line surveyed and described so that there's no ambiguities around those corners. Any questions on zoo lease and operating agreement? Okay, if we go to the next one, then I'd like to jump into the other reason we wanted to do this, is a new sublease that we're proposing with the Girl Scouts of Western Oklahoma, and I'll just tee it off and then hand it over to them to go into a little more detail, but a quick history of this is late last year, the zoo updated its master plan, and as part of that master planning process, we asked our consultants to consider some concepts of what to do in Zoo Lake Park across the lake. It's an underutilized area, it's a beautiful property, but not much going on there. Some fishermen do use it, it's a close-to-home fishing spot, but other than that, there's not a whole lot of wholesome activity occurring there anymore. So we had a concept to activate that, was sort of a nature-based play park, but it looked, per our master plan, it was gonna get pushed out 10 or more years down the line unless a partner materialized to help fast-track that. Lo and behold, as we were finalizing this plan, we were connected with the Girl Scouts of Western Oklahoma, who were looking for an in-town park for their Girl Scout camp, and the concepts that they were looking at were almost verbatim what we had planned for the park here, and so it seemed like a natural fit. So we're proposing a sublease to them of about 16.7 acres in the southern part of the Zoo Lake Park, which is this blue line around here, that was surveyed as well as part of these survey updates. And I'd like to introduce Shannon Evers, the CEO of Girl Scouts, to give you a little more background on what they're planning.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm actually gonna have Lily Thompson speak for us first.
Hello, my name is Lily Thompson. I'm in troop 315, and I'm a girl representative on the Girl Scout Property Task Force. I'd like to thank Mayor Holt and the council members for considering this proposal, because it would be a game changer for girls in our city, state, and beyond. I'm excited about the partnership with the zoo, because everyone loves the zoo, and we get to zip line to it. The zoo programs are always great, and this partnership will allow more girls to learn from them. I'd like to share a couple of the unique features of this new urban camp with you. We get to learn lots about geology when climbing a rock wall, we also get to learn about astronomy whenever we're camping under the stars. Most of all, I will be able to prepare for my future at the state-of-the-art STEM Center. Girl Scouts of the United States of America made a STEM pledge. This pledge is to get 2.5 million girls involved in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics by the year 2025. This camp will give girls the opportunity to be a part of this pledge in our city, our state, and our region. The community can count on Girl Scouts to always live a place better than we found it, to be inclusive, and to learn to be well-rounded girls ready to take on the world. I'd like to thank you again for your time and your attention.
Great job, thank you.
As you can see, our girls are super excited about this opportunity and the unique partnership that we have with the zoo and the city. If you could show the slide, go to the next one. Our vision for this property, we have a number of things that we really want to accomplish. As Lily mentioned, we recently made a pledge to get 2.5 million girls into the STEM workforce pipeline by 2025, and our council is obviously dedicated to that. Our goal is to get about 8,000 girls participating in STEM activities each year, and if just 10% of those girls go on into STEM careers, it will be a game changer for our city and for our state. As you know, there's a workforce shortage when it comes to STEM careers, there are also often higher-paying jobs. It will help us attract more businesses if we have the workforce of the future to be able to serve those businesses. So we're doing our part. This property will help fill that need and give us a really unique opportunity to inspire girls and get them engaged in all sorts of STEM activities. We also know that girls are in school on Tuesday mornings during the school year. This property will be built in a way to make sure that it's not just a summer camp, but we use it all year round, and we will also open it to the public. So when we're not using it, we want the community to use it, whether there are weddings or business retreats, or other youth groups, or other organizations that want to rent the facility, we want to make sure that the facility is open to the community as well. And we also, I mean, there's such community support for this project. Everywhere we go, there's excitement and energy around it. We're already attracting national attention from Girl Scouts of the USA. This is something that has never been done before. And we do camps all the time, but we're doing camp in a really, really unique way. And we imagine that we will attract not only girls from throughout the whole state, but also girls from throughout the country, and possibly internationally as well. And if you go to the next slide and kind of share a little bit, so we, the lease includes, like, the bottom, the southern portion of the park, we'll still have the opportunity to kind of play on the playfields that are on the northern side of the park, but we're gonna be developing the southern part of the park with a number of different things. If you go to the next slide, we'll have really all the amenities that you can imagine would be at a camp, just in a smaller space. Instead of 100 acres, we've got a little less than 17 acres. We've got an amphitheater, we've got a zip line across the lake, we've got a swimming pool, and, you know, really all of the attractions that you would imagine at a camp. In our facility, though, if you go to the next slide, it starts to show you little pictures, this is the outside of the building, the front entrance. The next slide kind of shows you an overview of, like, the amphitheater area. We'll be able to have about 200 people at the amphitheater, and if you can see that little white square, that's a treehouse, so girls will be able to stay overnight in treehouses, and they'll also be able to stay overnight inside the building. It was a two-story building. If you think of more like a youth hostel or a dorm-style living instead of what you traditionally think of as camping cabins, it will be a highlight, I think, for our adult volunteers that don't like going outside. It gives them an entryway, as well as our youngest users, who we want to make sure they're safe inside under lock doors. So number of different options. There will also be primitive camping on the site as well. And the next slide kind of gives you a picture of just some unique spaces that will be in our facility. So the treehouses are on the top left, the entryway is on the top right, and the bottom is like one of those bedrooms that we'll have, and then our STEM classroom is on the right. So we're really excited about this opportunity, and... really excited about this opportunity, and thank you in advance for supporting it. You have any questions?
So when will we have our first camp session?
We will be open in the summer of 2020. I hope you will all join us for our opening ceremonies.
The approval for this actually happened before I was on the Zoological Trust. The total capital investment in this property will be how much from?
It's a little over 12 million.
Shannon, you might share, just so people know, how you were able to put those dollars together. I mean, the Camp Cookie Land history is really important, I think.
Yeah. So we actually lost a camp property about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, Camp Cookie Land, which was a day camp facility for us, to a turnpike, to the turnpike expansion. So we got some money from that, but of course, it wasn't enough to be able to do, to really build another camp. So we started the long journey to look at different properties. And frankly, we probably wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to build the quality project that we're doing without being able to get a land lease like this. It's an incredible opportunity for our girls.
So if I could just take the opportunity to recognize a couple of the leaders in the audience. I see Joan McGuire back here, and Linda Whittington, Steve Mason have all been incredibly active on the Building Committee, Capital Campaign Committee, involved with the Juliet Low Leadership Society. And again, for those people that don't know, Juliet Low was the founder of the Girl Scouts, and she actually sold her pearl necklace to fund the original Girl Scout campaign. So there's a great history and great history of Girl Scouts of Western Oklahoma. We are so excited to have this camp out at the zoo. It's just thrilling partnership. And Dwight, thank you for being responsive.
One last question. How did you find this property?
We were actually looking at a number of different properties, and we weren't entirely satisfied with them. And one of our grant writers, who actually does some work for the zoo and for us, said, you know, you might want to call Dwight. So we picked up the phone on a whim, called him, and he was literally like, yeah, come over, look at it. And we got, hopped in the car and drove over and fell in love with the property immediately. Just knowing what his plans were, and how long he was having to wait for that, what our plans were, that we wanted to go right away. I mean, it couldn't have been stars more in alignment, I think, than what we got. So someone was looking out for us.
Okay, great. Thank you both. Any other discussion on any items under the consent docket? Seeing none, we already have a motion and a second, so we will cast our votes. Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I forgot to recognize Anne Gray. She's hiding in the back there, so.
All right. We are now on page 14 of the printed agenda with the concurrence docket, item eight. We have several items here that we could take with one motion.
I hope the concurrence docket subjecting individual experience.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Is there anything anybody wants to pull out? Seeing none, any discussion on any items under the concurrence docket? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item nine on page 17 of the printed agenda, items requiring separate votes. We have A1 and 2. A1, Amendment to the Master Design Statement to Limit Permitted Use, et cetera. Item A2, Ordinance on Final Hearing that was recommended for approval at 14400 Southwestern Avenue from AA to PUD 1688. Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Bob, do you want to address the first item, item A1?
Item A1 just represents an amendment they made to the document.
Okay.
Addresses the access and limits that use unit to the wagons. So you just need to approve that first, and then the other one's the actual item for.
Okay. And Dr. Orr is with us. So the Orr Family Farm has had a long history in Oklahoma City. And I would say, most elementary schoolchildren in both Oklahoma City and more public schools have experienced a great time there at Orr Family Farms. And now they'd like to extend or expand that a little and offer overnight camping with the use of some wagons and teepees. And this is what this PUD will provide for. I think it's going to be a great addition to South Oklahoma City, and we appreciate all of Dr. Orr's efforts in this regard. There's been no protests, no concerns voiced, so I would recommend approval.
Okay. So we'll consider that a motion on 9A1. And we've got a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. And we would need a separate motion for 9A2, Councilman.
Move for approval, 9A2.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are on item 9B, Ordinance on Final Hearing. This is closing an alley located to the rear of 1800 Northwest 16th. Councilwoman Salyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Excuse me?
Name and address, please.
David Kennedy. Address is 1601 Northwest Expressway. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 1800 Michigus. Essentially, what we have here is 106 feet or so, an alley which is open, kind of in name only, given that it has been fenced off by various owners, and there's trees growing in it. The remainder of the alley to the west is and has been closed since 1938. And this application is to close the, say, 106 feet or so closest to Indiana. It is supported or consented to by all of the abutting owners. And the effect would be that we would still have 20-foot sewer and water easements retained, but the abutting portions will revert to the various abutting owners when the right to reopen is foreclosed in district court.
This also will allow for the placement of dumpsters on that alley that's being vacated?
Excuse me, I couldn't hear you very well.
I'm sorry. This will also allow for the placement of dumpsters in the portion of the alley that's being closed? At least, that's what the memo says.
Well, I think it won't be accessible from, say, the street. There won't be, there will not be trash service from Indiana.
Right.
But yes, when people become owners, yeah, they might wall it off or fence it off and put trash dumpsters or something of that nature in the property that they control.
Right. Well, I think most of the issue is that there's restaurants
Yes.
in these buildings that need a place to locate their dumpsters.
Yes.
And so it was my understanding that at least part of the purpose of this was to permit dumpsters to be hidden in the alley behind the property.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because, you know, it is sort of our overriding policy that we prefer to keep these open when possible and keep the grid functioning as best as we can. But the history of this particular site is that it's been essentially closed for years, and you can't travel through it. So.
Yes.
There were no protests on this. We got unanimous approval from the commission, and staff did recommend its approval. So I would move that we close the alley.
All right. We've got a motion and a second on item 9B. Any further discussion? Is there anyone else here to speak about this item? Okay. Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 9C is a public hearing regarding ordinance relating to taxation, amending Chapter 52, Article 4, Division 2, Section 52151 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code regarding Fee Schedule for Occupation Taxes on Alcoholic Beverages and providing an effective date of October 1, 2018. This is the second of our three steps in regular amendment of an ordinance. Is there anyone here to speak at this public hearing? Does any member of the council wish to comment? Seeing none, there's no vote required, and we'll move on to item 9D. This is the first of three steps in this ordinance amendment, ordinance to be introduced and set for public hearing August 28, and final hearing on September 25 relating to zoning and planning code, amending Chapter 59 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code, et cetera. And I believe we have a presentation.
J.J. Chambliss is here this morning, and he's going to be followed by Laura Johnson.
Good morning. What's proposed here is a zoning code amendment to address certain businesses such as Airbnb or HomeAway, to provide some regulation to those that we currently don't have in the zoning code. We don't have anything that addresses these types of lodging accommodations currently. The ordinance itself is fairly simple. First, it creates a use unit category or a definition of what home sharing is that will be codified in the code. And that definition will read lodging accommodations that are provided in a dwelling or rooms in a dwelling for rent for a period of time not to exceed more than 30 consecutive days per renter or guest, where the owner or host may or may not reside. And then it's proposed that that definition be considered a conditional use, which means if certain conditions listed in the ordinance are met, then you would be eligible to provide home sharing. In this case, we're proposing four conditions, and they are, again, the rental of the home may not exceed 30 consecutive days. Two, the owner/host must comply with all applicable building and fire codes. The owner/host must obtain a home-sharing license, and all applicable fees and taxes must be collected and paid. Regarding those last two conditions, there's a companion ordinance on the docket today that follows this one that establishes a licensing, an application procedure, and a $24 annual fee for home sharing.
J.J., could you clarify for us how we arrived at the $24 fee?
Go ahead.
It's an existing fee in our ordinance, and we just, since we created this, we used the one that was already existing.
So if you were a hotel or hotel, you would pay exactly the same fee?
The fee is really just.
For the license?
Right.
Okay. Just to clarify.
The ordinance comes to you today with no recommendation from the Planning Commission. At their July 12 meeting, a vote to approve the ordinance failed by a vote of four to two of the six members present. Commissioner Powers felt that without a requirement that home shares be owner-occupied, she felt that it was more of a commercial intrusion into the neighborhood. Commissioner La Forge felt that while Airbnb and larger home-sharing operations have, seem to have adequate oversight of their home shares, smaller or independent home shares may not have that oversight and could cause some issues with the neighborhood. I think Laura wants to go into a little more detail of home sharing and history and how we got to this point.
That's exactly what I want to do. So J.J. and I are fairly well rehearsed on this because we've been to about eight different public hearings of this ordinance. So just to revisit how we got to this place, we've been talking about home sharing in one form or another for about three years with the city council. At first, when it came to us, the Hotel Association came and said, this is an uneven playing field for us, that these home-sharing hosts are not being taxed, they're not participating in the same level of regulation that we are as hotel operators. And so we took that under consideration. At the same time, we had a couple of complaints from neighborhoods about commercial encroachment in their neighborhoods with the operation of an Airbnb unit in their neighborhood, and we attempted some enforcement on that. We were successful on one, but then, as we moved forward with that enforcement, the prosecutor's office said, we recommend that you have more specificity in the ordinance if you're going to enforce a home-sharing ban. So we began to work on that. As we did, what we learned was that the operators, the hosts, would go what I'll call underground. They would take their addresses off the websites, so it was nearly impossible for us to have any enforcement level at all. As we looked further into it, we found that one of the ways to level the playing field was to impose our hotel tax. The hotel operators were particularly pointed in their conversation about the hotel tax, because it does support the fairgrounds and convention and tourism operations, and attracting visitors to our community. So they felt like that was a place where it should be participative. And so as we began to look at this, it became less evident that there were complaints in neighborhoods, and more evident that there was a need for the tax enforcement. The treasurer's office began working with Airbnb for an agreement to enforce the hotel tax, and that was approved by the council in about September of last year. So at the same time, oh, we had put guidelines on our website that involved either obtaining a special permit for bed and breakfast, which costs $1,800 to do that, or obtaining an SPUD to rezone just the property that you wish to have as a home-sharing unit, which really isn't the best, because that zoning would stay with the property permanently, but also cost $2,700. So we had no interested parties come forward and apply for either a special permit or an SPUD. So as we adopted the agreement to collect the hotel tax, we thought it seems disingenuous to have an agreement to collect a tax on something that we're not actually permitting in the ordinance. So we did move forward with a review of ordinances around the country and a determination of how we might approach this in Oklahoma City. Now, there are ordinances of every type all around the country, and this is an area that, as this home sharing has different effects on different communities, continues to evolve. So for example, in San Francisco, they're having a terrible problem with gentrification and affordable housing. And so they have effectively banned home sharing in some areas. Other communities have not had issues with it, and so they have permitted it. You might ask what other communities in Oklahoma are doing, and we have no indication that anyone has a home-sharing ordinance in Oklahoma. We have been told that Tulsa is considering developing one that would provide for a zoning unit, but we haven't had any follow-up with them that they've done that. We did have, as I said, I believe it was eight, no, I'm sorry, 11 opportunities for this ordinance to be discussed. And it would be important for me to indicate that there are opponents to this. The historic neighborhoods have indicated that they are not interested in participating in home sharing. The problems that we, the issues that they've pointed out are concerns about traffic and parking in their neighborhoods, concerns about commercial encroachment in their neighborhoods, concerns about strangers coming into the neighborhoods, and parties being held in the home-sharing units. So I did want to point out that those are issues. We estimate that there are about a little more than 575 home-sharing units currently in use in Oklahoma City, although I think about 300 of those are Airbnb units. But, you know, we can't quite define, because as I said, the locations are not well-defined, how many of those are in our corporate limits, or how many of those are just advertised as Oklahoma City metro. So, and I should point out that I am not aware of any more than a handful of complaints that we've received in the last few years regarding home sharing in neighborhoods. And I would certainly welcome any questions.
Can the covenants of a homeowner association prevent?
Yes.
Same question I was going to ask.
Okay.
If there's existing CCRs.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. And then, secondly, are these licensed automatic, or do you do any kind of a background check before issuing?
There's not a background check, but there is a zoning review, which is one of the reasons that the zoning use unit is proposed. We have currently a hotel operator's license, and one of the boxes that needs to be checked is whether or not they're in a proper zoning district. So there's not a background check that we do on it.
So when you say there's a zoning review, it's a residential home in a neighborhood, does that in and of itself prevent this to be used in a commercial setting?
That's what the ordinance is intended to do. That's what the ordinance is intended to do, to establish home sharing as a use unit in a residential area, any residential area, R1 through R4.
Okay. And then finally, what if the neighbors file some complaints? Can these licenses be revoked for cause?
So there are revocation procedures in place in the hotel ordinance. I would say that at this time, complaints by the neighbors is not an issue that is addressed in that ordinance, and so at some point, we may need to come back with a strengthening of that ordinance to allow for that. We don't have that in there right now.
Well, what are some of the reasons to revoke the license, such as failure to pay taxes or something like that?
Bob, can you answer that? Do you know? Failure to pay taxes is definitely one of the reasons.
I don't recall them all there. I think there's just four currently. It's, there's issues about operations, if there's criminal activity.
Sure.
The failure to pay your taxes, that was one of them. Those are, I can check on that and get back with. I think there's four in the ordinance currently.
That's fine. If you could report back to us, say, six months to a year from now to see what type, if any, complaints are registered with your office, and then we could consider whether or not we need to add another ordinance that would provide for revocation based upon neighbors' complaints.
That's something, we'll do that. We intend to track these if this ordinance gets adopted.
Thank you.
But did I hear that before we adopt it, we might be able to set a threshold and say, in any circumstance where we had three complaints or a certain number of complaints, we could revoke the license?
Well, yeah, we could. I'd hate to speculate. I'd rather see if we get any complaints, but I could envision, I'm sorry. I could envision traffic, parking being reasons for complaints, loud noise, just those types of activities occurring, but I would not be opposed to any amendments along those lines.
And those violations are dealt with, I mean, as a zoning violation or a violation through, it doesn't necessarily lead to revocation of the permit, but we do have the ability at loud noise, we can work those violations.
I just have heard a number of concerns from folks in some of Ward 6 neighborhoods, hoping for a little bit more teeth in this that would be specific to say, if we had, you know, X number of complaints, this could be revoked.
I think you'd, right now, you could, if they violate the conditions, they could be cited for that. And also, if there are other violations, as Bob pointed out, you could cite them for that. So if you were going to add to this, you might want to say if they've been convicted of some violation or something, the permit could be, the license could be revoked, but you have to amend this ordinance.
I think the councilman's concerns are legitimate. I've heard this in Planning Commission and also from, you know, neighborhood associations who have some serious concerns about what this looks like going forward. I think all of us struggle with just the language in terms of may or may not be occupants, you know. I think Commissioner Powers really wanted it to make sure that it was owner-occupied, so that there was some kind of oversight restraint that could be handled immediately, but kind of like in a bread and breakfast situation. But, and I think we struggle with, what does this look like ongoing in a particular neighborhood? And even though Councilman Greenwell said, you know, he's not, you know, want to see whether or not this is, you know, how this is going to work, I think that we would be proactive enough to put in place some number of complaints to allow for whatever license to be revoked at that point, that it would be a way that the community could respond to situations that could be happening, criminal or otherwise, in a particular location, whether it's a nuisance or criminal activity or whatever that is going on. We've seen those kinds of incidents all over our city where things were happening that you would not want happening in your neighborhood. And so it has to be a way really to control and to put some kind of limitation on how that actually, and this home-sharing whole industry is one that is growing, and I think that we would do well to encourage it, but encourage it in a way that is positive for our city. And so I know that Airbnb has some oversight, but then some of the smaller companies do not have that kind of oversight to really deal with concerns of home sharing. And so I'd like to see a little more teeth in that, like, Congress, I'm not Congressman, I'm going to give you a promotion there.
Don't.
Councilwoman Masaiu has said, "I would like to see a little bit more."
And just so that everyone that's watching and those here in the audience that are concerned and interested, the public hearing is set for August 28, and I would encourage people to come down. I have had a lot of feedback from some of the Ward 6 neighborhoods, and August 28 is the date to be heard. That input provides us the opportunity to gather ideas and concerns and help us shape some potential amendments to this ordinance. So we're just introducing this today, but the public hearing is August 28, and please come share your thoughts with us.
Another question, kind of echoing on David's comments. If you have a developer or a declarant or an HOA with CCRs, they can always amend those CCRs to prohibit this, correct? I mean, the ordinance won't interfere with that in any way.
The ordinance has no impact on that, and I really cannot speak to, I don't even know what CCR stands for, Councilman, so as far as I know, the ordinance has no impact on a homeowner's association's covenants.
I'm just talking about restricted covenants that are filed up record and are turned over to the homeowner's association at some point.
Right, right.
A point of clarification, if I could, and it fits right in, Marco, what you were talking about. It's my understanding that if a neighborhood association or a group of neighbors came together and modified their covenant to prohibit this, they cannot get any relief from the city if somebody violates that. But that has to be an individual action that the homeowner's association has to take against the offending B-R-B.
The city does not enforce restrictive covenants.
So just, I think people need to keep that in mind when they're figuring out their alternatives.
Is there a legal mechanism for a historic district or a group of neighborhoods to create an overlay where this would be prohibited?
I'm not a lawyer, so I'm going to defer that to the municipal counselor.
Sure. Yes, I could.
Second question is, what efforts are ongoing at the legislature, and is there any chance of preemption in the future or?
So it's my understanding that from time to time, there is potential for preemption, so I can't speak to, I know in the last session, there was some discussion about that. Airbnb has seen our ordinance, and they have not raised objections to it with us. I would imagine that if we and Tulsa adopt a similar standard for this, there's less likelihood of preemption, but I, really, we thought that when we were talking to Uber, so I can't tell you that they won't go to the legislature and preempt it.
So are taxes collected through Airbnb and the other, the hotel tax or any?
Airbnb collects the hotel tax on our behalf and also collects the sales tax on behalf of the state of Oklahoma. So that is an arrangement that they have separately with the state who collects our taxes.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it might also be important, you know, one of the things that makes this business model viable is very similar to Uber and Lyft and everything else in the sharing economy, and it all surrounds ratings, right? You have to, you know, in order to be able to successfully rent your extra room in your bedroom or rent a piece of property or requires that you have very high ratings. And so there is built-in incentive in this model to do a good job. If it's not clean, or if you have a lot of noise, or if you have wild parties, or, you know, so many of the things that we worry about, those things are controlled to an extent, and, you know, I don't do much of this, so, you know, I don't, ratings is not as important to me, but the generation that rideshares and house shares and care incredibly about keeping and maintaining a very high rating level. And so there is some policing, internal policing related to how this business model runs. So I just want to remind ourselves of that, too.
And the other thing that's changed this, too, is technology. You know, you and I have talked about, when I was a kid, my parents rented a cottage on the shore at the Outer Banks of North Carolina, and we got a great big thick catalog in the mail, and that's how you picked out your property and called them long distance on your rotary dial phone and picked up a rental for the week. You know, it's technology that's changed the landscape for this, and that's really what happened a few years ago when we started talking about it more. VRBO, for example, has been in existence since the mid-'90s. So this isn't a new idea, it's just that technology has changed the way that that business can grow.
And Laura, can I just clarify also the 30-day distinction?
The 30-day distinction is what separates a hotel from a long-term rental in our code right now. So if you rent for more than 30 days, you're just a landlord, and at that point, the city has no regulatory authority at all over that property.
Any further questions or comments? As has been stated, this is merely step one. There's a public hearing in a couple of weeks, and then final consideration two weeks after that. But we would need a vote to introduce this ordinance for consideration today, and I'd entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion today? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Moving on to item 9E. This is a companion to this whole topic. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on it? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. That brings us to 9F. This is ordinance to be introduced and set for public hearing on August 28. Final adoption, September 11, relating to motor vehicle and traffic. This is the first of three steps, and I think we have a presentation.
We do. Jason Fairbrush is here. This is in regarding to several ordinance we will be seeing in the next few months regarding the streetcar operations.
So, good morning, Mayor and Council. Yeah, we have a proposed ordinance change for you this morning to Chapter 32, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, specifically vehicles constituting a traffic hazard or obstruction. So if you look at the ordinance change, the ordinance currently allows for any vehicle that's left unattended and creates an obstruction to be impounded, and we are recommending a modification to the ordinance to really be a little bit more specific and allow a vehicle to be impounded if it obstructs the flow of public transit, or if any portion of the vehicle is protruding into a traffic lane. And obviously, that's very important for us from the standpoint of being able to protect the service on the Oklahoma City streetcar. The reason for that, and I know it's a bit obvious, but just for anyone watching that might also be interested in how a streetcar functions, a streetcar is unable to deviate from its fixed guideway. So if there's any portion of a vehicle, whether it be just, you know, a bumper, a mirror protruding past that white line into the traffic lane, it will basically stop the entire system. And again, it won't just stop one of the trains, it will literally bring the entire system to a stop. So that's why we're recommending the ordinance change. Again, the ordinance suggests that a vehicle may be impounded, doesn't say it will, but it does give us the flexibility to continue with our service. Now, one of the other things I did want to mention while I had the opportunity is that although we're recommending this ordinance change, really, our efforts are focused on communicating, right? Communicating how motorists interact with the streetcar. So a couple of things we're doing, and one of them, you see here, we have some heavy-duty sticky notes that we are, from time to time, putting on vehicles that are parked downtown, again, with the idea just to get the word out that if you're going to be parking downtown in a streetcar city, you need to park behind the white line. And so we're having assistance from the police department, some public works staff, our own staff. We are placing those on vehicles from time to time, again, in the effort to communicate with our downtown visitors, residents, and potential future streetcar customers. Also, we have a video that's showing on Channel 20 and some other places motorists in a streetcar city that address parking behind the white line. There's some signage along the route reminding motorists to park behind the white line. So again, just, our emphasis is really on trying to communicate that, but this ordinance will allow us to be able to move a vehicle if it does shut the system down.
Have you already begun placing notices on cars now?
Yes, we have. Right now, we're concentrating on the Bricktown area. That's where we've been doing our testing during normal workday hours. In fact, last week, we tested vehicles three days from basically 7:30 to 5:00 p.m. And actually, there was a great picture in yesterday's paper, if you happen to see it, that really showed how the motorists and the streetcar are going to interact. There was a picture of our clear-sky blue vehicle, you know, basically ride along some cars that were parked parallel on the street, so it's a very good graphic.
Jason, yesterday, someone tweeted a picture of a FedEx truck that had parked right on top of the track, and it was testing time, and so the streetcar had to stop for a while. Is there an effort to communicate with FedEx, UPS, other obvious carriers who have that kind of business practice?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't yet, but it is on the list of things to do. Loading zones are going to be a particular challenge for us, but we plan to address them one at a time and identify, like you say, the main vendors, the FedEx, the UPS, the Office Depots, do what we can to get the word out.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Jason? All right. I don't think we voted on this yet, have we, Francis? Nope, okay. Motion?
Got a second.
Got a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. This would be considered, again, two more times before final passage. Any other discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. That brings us to item 9G, ordinance to be introduced, and it is proposed to be adopted with an emergency relating to streets and sidewalks and the general schedule of fees, et cetera. And I think maybe Kenny Jordan has some thoughts to share as we consider this.
Yes, we currently have an ordinance in the code that says no person can leave, deposit, or cause to be left placed or deposited, et cetera, upon a pavement or sidewalk or public way, any essentially article, object, or structure that obstructs or encumbers it. So we're not supposed to have objects on the sidewalk that encumber the sidewalk unless it's expressly provided by ordinance or you get a revocable permit from the Public Works Director. So that's what the code provides now. However, there's no accompanying provision about the Public Works Director impounding those objects that are on the, say, on the sidewalk, blocking pedestrians, or just encumbering the sidewalks. If you get a certain number of items on the sidewalk, it's going to be a big problem. So to quickly address that particular problem, we drafted a short ordinance that would, it's a violation for a person in business, which seems to be the problem we're dealing with right now, providing rental services for any type of personal property to place or leave the property on the public right-of-way or public grounds unless it's authorized by the code or by a revocable permit. So this ordinance we have on today, which you may want to adopt with the emergency so it'll be immediately effective, would allow the Public Works Director to impound those items placed on the public way for rental if they don't have a revocable permit or otherwise provided by the code. Now, I know the city manager's office has been working on the ordinance that would, kind of a comprehensive ordinance to address bike sharing and obviously now scooter sharing, and so the manager's office is... and so, the manager's office is working on that. I know Laura Johnson is working on it.
Kenny, it's already been illegal to, obviously, as you stated, to place things on the sidewalk. You just didn't have an enforcement mechanism.
Not, just a citation is all we could do right now, as far as taking those items that are placed on the sidewalk, off the sidewalk, and holding them until the owner can be given notice to come pick them up.
And if this passes, it's effective immediately, but what notice is there?
There is, the Director can go ahead and impound those items, and if the owner is known or reasonably ascertainable, they have to give, the Director will have to give them notice right after the impoundment, and then they, and the place where it's going to be kept so they can go pick it up. And the ordinance also provides for a fee to cover the city's impoundment costs, and it would be, that would be actual work time times $100 an hour. And then, for actually redeeming the items, the cost on that for a story, just $5 per day per item. So, those are the proposed fees.
Who makes the decision to pound, and what if you have a pending application on file?
Pending application, I'll let the city manager address that, but as far as the decision to impound, it would be the Public Works Director or the city manager.
You know, it's not our intent to impound these. We understand this technology's coming. We're trying to work with both dockless bikes and dockless scooters to work something out on it, but there are going to have to be some rules that are going to have to be followed. And there's going to have to be some agreements with property owners to have these, you know, launch areas for them and such. And we are trying to work, some of them have been more willing to work with us than others. And again, we understand this technology's coming. Now, it's interesting, docked this morning. We've got things that we haven't dealt with before. Airbnb, the modern streetcar, and now this. It's, we have ordinances that never, you know, last week, staff was trying to interpret ordinances on scooters that had no knowledge or had no intent of having anything to do with scooters when those ordinance were adopted. And it's just new times we're trying to respond to the new technologies and new opportunities that are out there.
I guess my question is, if somebody has a revocable permit on file, and we pass this, we're not going to immediately go out and start impounding?
No, but if we get complaints on them, and they're in the middle of sidewalks and such, we do have that opportunity to do so.
Yeah, I don't know of anyone who has a pending permit application.
There was a permit filed.
I think that was already declined, right? Because it was inadequate?
I don't know, I actually don't know the status of that. I know Eric was working with him yesterday.
Well, do the revocable permits have to come before the council for final approval, or can they be issued?
Not those. I believe those are just issued by the Public Works Director.
Okay.
Right.
My understanding, there was a revocable permit filed on Friday.
Right, and then my understanding was it was declined on Monday.
That, I have not heard about that.
Okay.
The application that was submitted is substantially incomplete, and the Public Works Director is working with the applicant to get additional information.
Thank you.
And I would say that there are, for scooters, for example, there are three different companies around the country that put scooters on sidewalks. So, if you don't have some method of controlling that, you could have all three companies coming in, placing their scooters on the sidewalk without any control.
And Kenny, I mean, the reason we have these ordinances to protect the sidewalks is for our pedestrians. I have a letter on my desk from the mayor's disability committee, you know, about concern about how wheelchairs have access to our downtown sidewalks. So, I mean, it's very much a public safety purpose. But, as you said earlier, I mean, I think it's worth reiterating, there is a legal process, and one of the companies is potentially navigating that. I know of another company that's kind of got a team on the ground trying to get all the approvals with property owners to also navigate that process. It may be imperfect, but there is, in fact, a legal way to have scooters in Oklahoma City right now.
Correct.
But we are also working, and that may take two or three months, to adopt an ordinance that would meet the more modern needs of this business, just like we're considering the adoption of the Airbnb ordinance.
Right, and that, there is, as you said, there's an existing process. It's the same one that was used for the bicycles that are out there in the public way. So, they can file applications and completed applications and seek to get a revocable permit.
So...
And it would be just the same process if you wanted to put a table and chairs outside a restaurant? I mean, this isn't singling out any one industry either.
Right.
It's a standard process.
So, I guess I'm confused on how getting a revocable permit, I'm not saying that we shouldn't go down that path, but how does that keep them from being on the sidewalks or laying across the sidewalk?
It doesn't, absolutely. The business model is that they have places to put these, generally on private property or in areas on public property that we've approved for them to do, that they'll start out there in the morning. And then, throughout the day, they may not end up there. Then they collect them all in the evening, they've got GPSs on them, they collect them, they go recharge them, and then they deploy them again, starting out again in the approved areas. Now, that doesn't mean that some of their renters don't, will not follow the instructions and put them in places where they maybe shouldn't be, or block some sidewalks. That could happen. And if that does happen, then we have the right to go and pull them off. If there's one left in front of the door of a business or something, and that business complains, we're probably going to respond to it.
Jim, the revocable permit process puts the vendor in the position of getting permission, developing agreements with the property owners where they would be, where they would be placed for rental.
Yes.
And then also, obviously, sensitizes the vendor to our applicable laws, you know. I mean, if you asked a layman, should I put it near the curb or near the building? They might say, I guess, near the building. But in reality, the curb is where we prefer things to be because that's the amenity zone, as we call it. So, you know, those types of processes happen when we're communicating with an applicant rather than just chaos.
And you're right. Not only do we have to educate the vendors, we have to educate the users also.
Right. Yeah, I mean, some of the thing, this is about placement of leasing, of rental areas. This is not really about use because that is not necessarily the liability of the vendor. That's the user. For example, they shouldn't ride them on sidewalks, you know, that's been a longstanding ordinance in our city. That has nothing to do, really, with what we're talking about here this morning because that's not addressed by this, by this potential impoundment. That's not why we would be impounding. It would be because of where they're being placed in their vending areas.
They shouldn't run red lights, but they're going to, yeah.
So, just to be clear, what we're talking about is their nesting location, correct? Is that all we're talking about, is the nesting location?
Well, it's primarily the nesting location, yes.
Okay. So, if they're nesting on private property, which I heard they were trying to move to or something like that, is, so in that case, they don't have to get any kind of permit? Is that correct?
I think, I think that would be correct. They are looking at a number of the smoking locations, for example. Some of those are in the right-of-way, some of those are on private property. And so, I think it'll be a combination of both.
Interesting.
So, to your comment, so, last week, we had a journalist that rode one, pushed the brakes, and then went over, broke both forearms, dislocated his elbow. The maintenance of these scooters, we wouldn't be involved in, is that correct? I mean, these are, even though they travel 15 miles an hour and they would be, could potentially cause those kinds of injuries, we wouldn't be involved in the maintenance or any kind of...
That's correct.
Is that, that's a good question. I'm, obviously, that's not probably contemplated in the revocable permit process. Is that contemplated in the ordinance that's being adopted, that's being considered and drafted for consideration somewhere down the line? That kind of aspect of this?
I don't know. I haven't been directly involved in that. Laura's been working on it with some other attorneys, but that's probably a lawsuit between the journalist who broke his arms and the company that put the scooter out there.
Exactly. You know, the one thing I'd say is, I was in LA two weeks ago. Everywhere, they are extremely popular with the younger people. It's something that's coming. It's going to come. Last weekend, I was preparing for a trial. I was downtown all week. There were a lot of young people riding all over the place. So, it's another form of transportation. We've dealt with segways and skateboards and bikes. It's something we can deal with.
Yeah, I think we're, I think our willingness to consider an ordinance in pretty swift time for our purposes, I mean, think about how long the Airbnb ordinance has been under consideration at the staff level and is now just finally coming to us. We're willing to put this, you know, potentially on the docket in a matter of weeks from now and then go, run it through our three-step process. Shows that we're willing to embrace disruption, but you also have to embrace the rule of law and, you know, protect the process, because the process was created to protect people who use those sidewalks. And so, we have to have an open, transparent, democratic process to amend our laws. We don't just throw them out. But I think this community, what I've sensed in the week or two since the launch of a certain vendor here in town is that they are interested in the scooters, but they also care about sidewalks and safety. And everybody that I talk to seems patient and is willing to let this go for two or three months. We did live without these for 129 years. So, maybe a few more weeks, you know, we could do this the right way. That's what I think we should do.
So, Kenny, to the impoundment question, so, we would impound them, so then the company can pick them up, pay the $5 a day, and then put them right back on the street if they so chose?
They can. Apparently, they pick them up on a daily basis. They put them out in the nest to begin with, then they're used, and then they have, apparently have people that go around and pick them up at night. They're not out overnight, is my understanding.
Recharge. That's because they have to recharge them.
Is $5 enough to cover our costs?
Craig says yes.
It's the $5 plus the $100 an hour to pick them up.
Okay, okay.
It's a different fee for actual, the impoundment where our crews are going around seeing where they are without revocable permits.
Is it $100 per scooter or per...?
No, it's $100 per hour of actual work time.
Okay.
Kenny, oh, you jumped in, sorry.
So, just to be clear, they can, they can be in the right-of-way as long as they aren't nesting in the right-of-way. Is that correct?
They can be used in the right-of-way. The nests should have a revocable permit. They should go, apply to the Public Works Director to get a revocable permit for the locations where they want to put them out.
And, so here's my confusion. We're permitting the nest, right?
Correct.
But we're saying without a permit for that nest, we're going to really pick them up anywhere. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just trying to get it straight in my head. I mean, I see the need for this, which I know we're working towards one. I'm just trying to figure out the need for this one today, in all honesty. I've heard nothing but great feedback on it so far. I mean, I would love to hear, I think, more input from my constituents before we try to squash something that, I don't know, everyone I've talked to does it.
I will say, yeah, excuse me, I will say that you've had one company that's in the scooter business come in and work with the city manager's office on the proposed ordinance that's been in the works for a number of months, and they haven't put their scooters out illegally. And then you had another company that decided that they were just going to come in essentially without any notice to the city whatsoever and give us a letter on the same day that said they were going to place all of these on private property. Instead, they went out and placed all of them in the public sidewalk. So, you have had one company that's working with us and one that's not.
And the one that isn't, is that the one that put in for the permit last Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Kenny, if a, if a company, either the one that's already out there or others, puts in a permit application that is complete, and that's a little bit of work, I mean, you've got to make agreements with all these property owners, and so, it could take a few days. It's my understanding, the Public Works Director can approve that as quickly as his review is completed and knowing what priority this has sort of become, I imagine that would be a matter of hours, not days, and then, and then the company could do business almost immediately, right?
Maybe a day or two. Eric is out there, he can probably answer that.
But, I mean, just nod. I mean, somebody could turn in an application to you today, and they could maybe be in business tomorrow. Is that correct, Eric? I mean, is that a fair statement?
We, I think that application has to be complete, so I'm going to use your words. We got to make sure that it includes all of the requirements of the revocable permit. And so, once we receive that, we'll check that for completeness. We'll make sure that the letters of no objection have been received. There are some other requirements as well, but it has to be complete.
Yeah, so, and then you approve it, and they can go to business as soon as they receive your approval, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, I look at it as somebody could be in business by Friday legally, in Oklahoma City, probably, if they would just do the process that we have already in place. So, I don't know that anything we do today is squashing scooters. I mean, there's a legal process that they could take advantage of immediately.
You're not quashing any opportunities that currently have to operate legally.
So, given all of that, I would move that we adopt this ordinance.
Quick question, if I could, David. We go ahead and we approve this this morning. Coming to work down here this morning, I saw four scooters nesting in an area that they're not supposed to be. When do we start enforcing whatever, when we pass this?
I don't know. Good question.
It could be enforced immediately.
I'm hoping, I just want to know... I'm hoping that we have some discretion and try to work with everybody and resolve this quickly.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we're not zealots, we're not itching to go get some scooters, you know. I mean, I think if it could be resolved, that would be the ideal situation.
Right, yes. I'm not the actual enforcer, so I'm sure the city manager can...
There could be instances where they're, you know, blocking an entrance or something like that, and we get complaints on it. We're going to respond to those complaints.
I just want to, I want to help new business. I want to work with them, and I hope we have some discretion, some grace period before we start this.
So, I just want to speak to that for a moment, and the company was notified a week ago Friday, so almost 10 days ago now, to remove their scooters until they had a revocable permit. I am speaking for the Public Works Director right now, but I'm pretty sure none of us wants to have any scooters. We just, we just don't need them. So, I'm sincerely hoping that this, that if the ordinance passes, that it indicates to them that they should not set them out again tomorrow morning. But that would be, in my opinion, the best outcome of this, but that we have the authority in the event that they do to pick them up.
But that's your opinion?
Yes, sir, that's my opinion.
And Mark, I really agree with you. I really, you know, this is an interesting new technology. People are having fun with it. We want to be, you know, an open city to new ideas, but there are rules. And this idea of...
But I think we want to be an open city, and we want to welcome new businesses. We want to help them be successful.
Right.
And from what I saw in Los Angeles, this is successful business. There were a lot of people using these devices.
And that is true, but there are cities all over the country that have enforced, have created these kinds of ordinances and have impounded these scooters with this gorilla-type approach. And as has been said, we have a mechanism to do this correctly. The idea of asking for forgiveness hasn't been the most successful here.
I think we're saying the same thing.
I think so, too.
I mean, I think the companies need to abide by rules, and I don't think us rewarding people who don't abide by rules and causing companies who are abiding by the rules to fall behind the game, I don't think that that's, I don't think that's fair. So, I mean, I think that this just gives us the authority to enforce rules. I agree. Is Matt Ball from Bird here? He called me in the middle.
He is. Would you like him to come speak?
Sure.
Matt, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and an address.
Matt Ball, not with Bird, but represent Bird here in Oklahoma with CMA Strategies, consulting firm here in downtown Oklahoma City. So, we, I would say this, I can speak to what Bird has been willing to do. We've been very, we've been very appreciative of the city staff, working with them. We're currently in the process of resubmitting a revocable permit application for the Public Works Director. And we are working, as we speak, to do that. So, to be clear, we have been working with the city and have enjoyed those conversations and hope to be as collaborative as possible going forward.
Matt, not to hold you to it, but do you see any timeline for when you might be able to resubmit an application?
My hope would be very, very soon, possibly within the next couple of days. I think that the legal team for our client is reviewing the best way to satisfy the city's concerns and still conduct, be able to conduct their business model. And so... And so I think that's the primary delay. But know that we are willing to work with the city and willing to work with each of you and the city manager's office, both on a permanent solution while we work on the short-term part here, so.
Counselor Menchon?
I just want to echo, I think Bird deserves a public rebuke for these tactics. If we were considering this in a vacuum, that'd be one thing, but you clearly are doing this in municipalities throughout the country. You've been given a valuation of $1 billion. You're obviously competing for capital financing with the other startups, and while they're coming and trying to do it one way, you're trying to de facto create market share by ignoring city ordinances and working with, I don't think you've been working with us. And again, it's, you have a long, I say you, Bird has a long track record of doing this in municipalities throughout the country, so I don't think you can just consider it within a vacuum. I hope things change, and I hope it's a level playing field for all involved.
No, I think that we want there to be a level playing field. So while we prepare, or our client prepares the revocable permit application to resubmit, know that we are both interested in short-term solution in that regard, but a long-term solution in terms of an ordinance that will help responsibly regulate this for the city. Our client, I think, is committed to being a transportation solution for Oklahoma City citizens and, you know, have made some, are willing to work with the city to ensure that that happens.
I'd like to ask also, just on this injury last week, which requires a lot of force to dislocate the elbow and break both arms, what will Bird be doing in terms of maintenance or making sure that the brakes are working properly or?
That would be a question for probably the client themselves, since it involved an apparent accident, which I know, for the record, know more about than you have in terms of reading it in the newspaper. So I would have to defer to our client directly on that. But I will say that as an operator, that they do a great deal of education on safety. Safety is their number-one concern. That's one of the reasons that they, you know, are willing to sign revenue-sharing agreements with cities to help build bike lanes, to do these things, to help cities prepare for this, these changes. I would say, and I couldn't speak to the specifics of a certain incident, but I will say that safety is a huge priority for them and that they do a tremendous amount of in-app education for their riders in their application, their mobile application.
Has Bird signed a revenue-sharing agreement with the municipality?
I believe in certain cases, but I could not speak to the specifics. I don't know, I know that that is something that they offer to all cities.
To all cities, including Oklahoma?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Matt? Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, is there anyone else here, I should ask, who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none. Is there anyone, you make a motion? Okay, now, there are two votes required here. So this is the motion for adoption of the ordinance, and we've got it from Councilwoman Sayer. Is there a second?
So...
Second? Yes, further discussion?
I'm just curious, yes, for just a second.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious if we still want to leave this as effective immediately. I mean, if they're still working on their application, they've applied once, we denied that because it was incomplete, but we still want it to be effective immediately.
That's up to the council. You could, if you wanted to, you could amend this to provide an effective date, to say 10 days or a week or something like that. It's really up to the council, and you could amend it if you wanted.
I say immediately.
I'll stand by myself and say, I'll make the motion.
Okay, so I already have a... All right, your motion takes precedence.
My motion is to amend the ordinance, making the effective date 10 days from now.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? So we're just going to vote, we're just going to plunge in and vote on it? Okay. All right. The motion is to make it effective 10 days from now, and seeing no discussion, we'll cast our votes. Okay, that motion fails four to five. I wonder if people would have entertained a motion for a slightly shorter...
Well, now I need to make a motion for nine days. See if we can pick up one more.
Why don't you make a motion for five days?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
A motion for, is that a motion for five days from, so what day are we really talking about? What would that be?
You might want to make a motion for seven days. That'll make it next Monday.
So Monday at morning, it would be effective?
Well, Monday.
Okay, all right. We've got a motion and a second on that. Is there any discussion on that, making it effective Monday morning? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes one, two, three, four, five, six, seven to two. Okay.
You still need the emergency, though.
Well, we haven't even adopted the ordinance yet. I was just amending it. I mean, not to correct the attorney, but... Okay, so we now are back on the ordinance as amended, that would be effective on Monday. Is there, we actually have a pending motion and second on that. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and now we are on the emergency that allows it to be effective as soon as it is, although that is now Monday.
What about the emergency?
Got a motion and a second on the emergency. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. It required seven votes, so it will be effective on Monday. And again, this is merely an enforcement mechanism of our existing prohibition against blocking our sidewalks and other right-of-ways. Okay, moving on to item 9H1. This is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures that appear on your agenda, items A, B, and C. Is there anyone here to discuss any of the items here under item 9H1? Seeing none, is there any discussion from the council or a motion for item 9H2, which is a resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated?
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item 9I1, a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. And it looks like we do, in fact, have somebody who's actually already signed up. Am I correct, Jeff?
Yes.
All right, come on forward, and you are here to speak on item 9IF, which also shows up incidentally under item 9J as well. So, Mr. Penner?
Jeff Penner, 1496 East Interstate Drive, Norman, Oklahoma. Mayor and city council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. 30 days ago, I spoke with you about requesting an extension to put in place, the original request was to secure the structures. Ownership decided probably the best solution for all was just simply to tear down these structures. You very graciously, at that time, did grant 30 days and asked me to come back and report to you on the progress. So I'm here today to tell you that an agreement has been signed with Midwest Wrecking. That agreement was emailed to each of you for your review. We fully anticipate to get this knocked out very quickly. As vested surveys was done last week, the permits have been applied for by Midwest Wrecking. We've been in very good communication with Mr. Bumpus. He seems pleased with our progress on that, and basically, we're just asking for 60 days to get this project knocked out.
Okay, so how do we, oh, do you want to speak? Staff, yeah. Can we hear from staff?
That would be appropriate.
So we would defer this towards a future meeting? Are you pulling up a date, Francis?
Move to defer it 60 days.
Second of motion.
You prefer to have a meeting, don't you, on the, in the motion, right?
Yeah.
In particular, hold on, she'll get, she'll give...
We'll get a date specific.
Let's do September 25th. July 58.
September what, 25th?
25th.
Okay. So the motion then, you agreed to, to September 25th meeting. Motion and a second. Okay.
Second of motion.
All right. Any discussion on that? This is just for item 9IF, correct? That's what this item is?
Yeah.
A motion on that. We've got that? Any discussion, I mean? Seeing none, cast your votes. That item is deferred. Thank you. And I'll bring it back, we'll bring it back up just here in a second when we get to J as well.
On behalf of Fred Mazari and Champ Patel, they thank you very much for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, we're back on item 9I. We're in the public hearing section. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak about any of these items? Seeing none. Of course, we are considering the items except for the ones that the city manager deferred at the beginning of the meeting and the one that we just deferred to September 25th. I would entertain a motion for item 9I2, a resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on item 9J1, a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings, other than the ones that the city manager deferred at the beginning of the meeting. And then I would go ahead and maybe entertain a motion to defer item 9J1E to September 25th.
Second.
Motion and a second. Seeing any discussion? None. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9J1E is deferred to September 25th. I would now entertain a motion for item 9J2, a resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we are now at item 9K1. This is a public hearing for item 9K2, the resolution authorizing acceptance of the joint award for the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $464,190, et cetera. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in the public hearing section of this item? Seeing none. Is there a presentation?
Chief City's here just to explain the parameters of the grant.
Yeah, the acceptance of this grant, it's for 2017. It was delayed a little bit because the money wasn't released. We received it last year. We normally use that, if you remember in the budget, we converted what we were normally using JAG for our victim assistance program and also for our sex offender registration and hiring employees, we were using it for that. We moved those items over into, actually about $274,000 from the JAG over into the general fund, because those positions are pretty, they're permanent. We're going to, we are actually going to purchase a robot, we'll request to purchase a robot with a new bomb robot with that $274,000. So it's split four ways between Dell City, Midwest City, Oklahoma City, and us, and county.
Any questions for Chief City?
I'd move the item.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for the resolution under item 9K2. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we're on item 9L, resolution of the mayor and council concurring and consenting to the approval of the real estate purchase agreement for the sale of the Santa Fe Plaza parking garage by the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, et cetera. Mr. Couch?
Jason's here to go over the terms. This is essentially, essentially, there's no subsequent changes from the agreement that was approved four weeks ago by council.
Yes, so good morning again, mayor and council. Yeah, just speaking briefly about, if I could, actually, two items, 9L, and I can go ahead and talk briefly about 9M as well. Both are real estate purchase agreements. 9L is a resolution concurring and consenting to the sale of the Santa Fe Plaza parking garage for $22.5 million to Continental Resources and Bank First. Item 9M is a resolution for the sale of a property we refer to as the Bricktown Lot. It's more, described in more detail in your memo, but that lot to be sold for $1.4 million to Bank First and Bricktown Parking Investors. And again, the real estate purchase agreements were drafted based on the memorandum of agreement setting forth the terms for the real estate purchase agreements that were approved by council on July 17th. Since that action by council, the memorandum of agreement did go to the COTPA Board of Trustees on July 23rd, and then on August 9th, the COTPA Board of Trustees approved the real estate purchase agreement for the sale of the Santa Fe parking garage. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jason?
So is there, is there an appraisal still coming on item M?
No, no, sir. The appraisal has been completed on that, and it's less than $1,400, so we're going with the $1,400 amount.
Okay.
I would move the item.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item 9L. This is in regards to the Santa Fe parking garage. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one. And then we're on item 9M, a companion to that. This is a resolution approving a real estate purchase agreement for the sale of the west portion of the Bricktown parking lot to Bricktown Parking Investors, et cetera. Is there anything else to add to this? I think you kind of covered it in your previous discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, so I entertain a motion or discussion or questions?
Move the item.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Your honor, I would just like to say, I'm going to vote no. I'm not confident that this is the true fair market value, as I mentioned previously. So I'm not saying the appraisal that we have is incorrect. There's a variety of ways to appraise things. I just don't agree with it, so...
Okay.
Probably no.
Okay.
So along those lines, so we did an appraisal in the last month?
There was an appraisal done two years ago, and that appraisal was updated. And there were a couple of things that changed specifically on it. One was because interest rates had gone up, it was an income-based approach, so the cap rate went up, and because of that, then the appraisal value goes down because it's more expensive to borrow money on that. The other was, they looked at the existing lease, and because the existing lease is now two years shorter than it was when they did the appraisal, that also affected it. So those two factors brought the appraisal down from the $1,400,000 to $1,300,000, five-something. And so the, but the purchasers have agreed to maintain to the $1,400,000 number.
And what about comps, land sale comps or...
Kenny, you want to, Jason, one of the two of you?
We did, we did talk with the appraiser early on about different methodologies and went with his recommendation of using the income approach. One thing, one thing that makes this property a little bit unique, that at least he questioned initially the thought of using comps, is we have to remember that this property is essentially landlocked. So it really, in his opinion, I guess, made it difficult to really compare comps because to have access to the property, you'd basically have to purchase some adjacent property to be able to access it. So it made it pretty, pretty unique. That and the fact that there was already an existing lease that would go out to, I believe, 2035. We went, we went with the appraiser's recommendation to use the income approach.
Well, the other issue is that it's truncated by a reserve right-of-way for the future rail line. So you've got this huge arc that goes through the property, the reserves that really limits the ability to use that for market development.
Yeah, that's, that's right, too, yeah.
Any further questions?
I have one more question. The improvements that we're going to have to make if and when they build a garage there. Did we place a limit on that? Do we have a limit in place that says up to this amount we'll spend on the improvements?
We have done preliminary engineering studies and looked at both underground and above-ground options, which are pretty similar in cost, so we do have a feel for what those, what that would be.
And they have, I'm just trying to remember, they have like up to eight years to build the garage, is that correct?
Seven, was not?
Seven?
Eight?
Seven? I'm just one over today, I guess, on my day, years. So if they build the garage seven years from now, what does, what does that do to our expense side on, how much?
Well, there's going to be, we don't know. It'll be a percentage of construction, but...
What percentage would you...
But we will have the proceeds of the 1.4 that we'll be able to use.
Okay, thank you.
Going forward, what would be the disadvantage of putting property up for auction? I mean, having a public auction process? And with, you have your appraisal, you put a minimum bid at that appraisal level, and then let people bid, and if... then let people bid, and if, if this is the only use, and there's only one party interested, then we'll sell it for that amount. If somebody else sees, here's contiguous land downtown, and they had an interest, they would have an opportunity to bid, and we would potentially receive more money, or the taxpayers would.
I.
We have another issue with some park land that we have different people interested in. I mean, just, I'm just saying, going forward, other, other branches of government, state ODOT, they have public auctions. I mean, what is the?
That's not a bad practice, Councilman. The difference on this is that we were trying to do a couple of things. One is to take care of a major, the major employer downtown that does not have parking. And then, next to that was to make sure we assist in the revitalization, keeping the large Cotter Tower in economic play.
Right, I mean, I guess, I guess if we weren't selling it to them, we'd just as soon hold on to it. We didn't really wake up one morning saying, we got to sell this, this parking lot, which is a different situation than when ODOT's got land, they just know they're not going to use, and they just might as well get rid of it.
And just to refresh, I think, we were originally approached by Continental Resources to buy the whole thing, and we said, we're not, we don't think that's a good idea. We understand, and their motivation was to be in control of their parking because they have 500 parking, parkers in the Cox Center, and the Cox Center is going to go away at some point in the future. So they, and they wanted to be guaranteed that they have parking in downtown Oklahoma City. They wanted to buy the whole thing. We said, no, we have a responsibility to provide for, like Cotter Tower and some others that are downtown Oklahoma City. So as we were negotiating with Continental, Bank First comes forth and said, we'd like to buy the rest of that to, to maintain the viability of, the financial viability of Cotter Tower. So it was kind of changed at that point in time. You know, there's a couple, three things where we've achieved on this. We've provided parking for the major downtown employer that doesn't have parking downtown Oklahoma City. We've helped and helped maintain the financial viability of Cotter Tower because parking is important to them. We've, with the Santa Fe, or the Bricktown parking, we've addressed the ability to have more parking long-term for non, other people in downtown Oklahoma City. And then, although we had the financial wherewithal to, to build the convention center parking garage without this sale, at the end of the day, we're going to be probably better off, COTPA will be better off because of the capital dollars that they will have to be able to buy down the convention center garage. And at the end of the day, COTPA is probably going to be in a little bit better financial shape overall.
And I understand that. I don't want to rehash the whole process, but if you had a bankruptcy proceeding where you had seven, 11 different entities all interested in Cotter Tower, why not say publicly, hey, we want, we want to make Cotter Tower, we want to revive it and make it viable? So we're willing to do what we can do to help with the parking, and we'll put this public land, taxpayer land, you know, as part of the deal. Why wait until after the bankruptcy award was made to Bank First and then say, okay, we'll, we'll make this land available? Because you had seven entities that were asked for a best and final offer, and they didn't know that this was potentially available for $1.4 million and that there would be parking with the Kartsmer Garage and all that. Why not, you know, put all that out there and say, hey, well, everybody can, can bid on this and include it in your, in your proposal to the bankruptcy proceedings? Six, six entities didn't get the same chance that Bank First got.
Well, if Bank First contacted us after that, but none of those people contacted us before that time.
And neither did Bank First?
Right.
So, okay. So, okay, but we.
It could, yeah. 2020 hindsight, knowing the timing of coming down, it could have been done that way. Didn't know what the, what the timeframe was, the criticality of the parking with Bank First and all those things. Nobody approached us on that as that was going through the bankruptcy proceedings.
Okay.
All right, any other comments, questions on item 9M? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion? Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. We'll see no further discussion, we'll cast our votes. Passes seven to two. Moving on, 9N. This is in regards to 9N-1, which is a resolution denying the request of municipal employee Keith Sweeney to retain Gary James to represent him in the Oklahoma County District Court case styled Boston Pigeon v. Keith Sweeney. And I understand we are going to go into executive session on this, so I would entertain a motion to, to do so.
Move the item to executive session.
So this is a motion on item 9N-2, to enter into executive session. Seeing no discussion, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that at the conclusion of other proceedings. Now, we're at item 9O-1. This does not require executive session?
That's correct.
So this is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority authorizing Stacy Hawes Felkner and Collins Zorn and Wagner to represent municipal employees and Oklahoma City Police Officers Dennis Layden and Adam Rolle in the U.S. District Court case Green v. Layden et al. I would entertain a motion to adopt the joint resolution.
Move the item.
Got a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we are on item 9P. We do need to go into an executive session here, and so we'll entertain a motion. This is on advice of the municipal counselor to receive confidential communications from its attorney regarding the pending mediation in the city of OKC versus Mimosa Properties case. I would entertain a motion for an executive session.
Move the item into executive session.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will also handle that executive session at the conclusion of our other business, which brings us to 9Q. We will want to go into an executive session on advice of the municipal counselor to receive confidential communications with its attorney regarding pending litigation in the case of the city of OKC versus 23 SAC Self-Storage Corporation. Your Honor, Rolle?
Yes, we do.
Move the item into executive session. Thank you.
Motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that executive session at the end of the meeting. And finally, we will want to go into executive session for 9R, to discuss collective bargaining negotiations for this current fiscal year with the FOP, the IAFFF, and the, and AFSMI. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that executive session at the conclusion of our other business as well. Which brings us to 9S-1, claims recommended for denial minus one claim that was removed by the city manager at the beginning. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none. Kenny, do we need executive session? We do not. I would entertain a motion.
Move the claims.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we are at item 10A-1, claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Kenny, do we need executive session? We do not. I would entertain a motion.
Move the claims.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we are now at item 11. Thank you. Items from council. We'll start at Word 8.
Nothing today. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I guess I was just going to make a quick comment. You know, we've worked on all kinds of forward-thinking things today, and I was really pleased recently to hear that the Good Egg Dining Group had moved away from using plastic straws in all of their restaurants. And I just thought we either would take this moment to congratulate them and encourage others to do the same. It's a tiny drop in the environmental challenges that we all face, but it is an issue that can be easily resolved. We have technology today where we can look at other materials, and so rather than, you know, go, go a lot further, I just would like to encourage all of our restaurants and restaurant suppliers to look at using other materials rather than plastic straws.
So noted. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Your Honor, I would like to at least consider, you know, all the various MAPS programs or projects that we've completed. If we could identify them as being a part of, whether it's MAPS-1 or MAPS-3, for example, like the library, put some kind of indication on it that it was a part of the MAPS-1 program, the ballpark, do the same thing. Just try to improve the visibility or the knowledge, both for potential, you know, future votes, as well as a legacy 50, 100 years from now. People could look back, kind of like it's kind of neat to see a WPA project, you know. I, at least, it's neat for me, so.
I've seen those projects have plaques.
They all have dedication plaques, but are you looking for something more visible than that?
Yeah, just a little bit more visible of the MAPS logo or the MAPS, you know, project. But yeah, I mean, I know we do that, but I'm not sure how, how much we emphasize that it was created or built or constructed as a result.
Maybe like kind of a narrative even. It's like, you know, MAPS was passed in 1990, kind of explains what that was.
Yeah, we don't know how long it'll last. I mean, if it lasts another 50 years, people just know it.
Right.
Because they just know it, but if it doesn't.
I agree with David on that from a historical perspective. I'd like something brought back to council.
Yeah, that might be a nice, you know, it's the 25th anniversary this year of the passage of MAPS. It may be a nice way to commemorate it, is to make sure that the story is told. We do have those plaques, they've got names. It probably says MAPS, but that's probably, it doesn't explain it or, you know, go into the history.
Yeah, just the whole process, if possible. But do it kind of concise. I mean, we don't want to take up a whole wall.
Well, and different facilities may need different solutions.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, flooded by texts from my staff saying, they have plaques. So we understand.
I'm sorry.
We know everybody in the conference room, they have plaques. You don't have to text the city manager.
I should have started out with that. One other statement or request, and, and this is, you know, as, as Councilwoman Sawyer mentioned about our efforts to provide funding for various projects, mainly dealing with homeless and West Town and things like that. Could we get an objective report? This may sound somewhat naive, of the issue of homelessness and what we believe is the cause for it? I mean, I know I've heard a variety of different reasons, but having a formal report that says roughly X percentage of the people who are homeless have some type of, of mental situation going on that prevents them from maintaining a job, staying in, you know, more permanent-type housing, and so they elect to just live out on the streets. And there probably are other reasons for that. I think the more we understand this issue, the better able we are to address it. And perhaps if we don't have a more formal presentation or, or education provided to us, we all develop our own theories as to why people are homeless. But, but I think it would be helpful to try to have as objective as possible presentation, whether it's in a paper form or some type of in-person presentation. And then, look a little bit further as to the options for permanent housing. There are some people who aren't able to work, and they have some type of public assistance, and they choose not to live out on the streets. Rather, they, they live in some type of public housing and receive some type of public support. And one final comment related to this. Is the issue of homelessness, homelessness, is it growing? Or as a percentage of the total population, is it about the same? And the fact that, you know, our population keeps growing, there's more and more people who are homeless. So just a better education, at least for me, maybe no one else has an interest in, in having a better understanding of this issue. But for me, it would be helpful. Thank you.
David, there is material that you could get pretty quickly. The point-in-time count that's done every year is in written form, and I'm sure the manager can get all of us a copy of that. But it talks about, you know, those folks that self-identify as having mental illness or substance abuse problems and who the categories are and who has housing. I think that's a really good place to start. And the United Way also does vital signs reports, and I think they've done one fairly recently on the causes of homelessness and what we're seeing in the community. But just to address one thing about the visibility of it, is that there have been some changes in the policies of some of our shelters, and we've had about 500 emergency beds removed from the system. So while the number in the point-in-time count seems to have gone down just a little bit, the number of folks actually on the street has gone up. But there is great material, and maybe Debbie could come give us a report.
There's information out there. We'd be happy to provide something, get a presentation to you. I'm not an expert on homelessness, but what I've learned over the last few years, it is generally not one thing that makes someone homeless. It's a combination of a number of factors out there, but we can get some people to give you more in-depth information on that.
Thank you. And the one last overriding question. If it is not related to a mental health issue, why do some people choose not to accept more permanent or public housing? I mean, those are the kinds of things I don't understand.
That's a complex question.
You know, in terms of safety and well-being. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stone?
I had the opportunity to attend the police fire soccer game Saturday, and just wanted to give an update on that. Police won. Great game, two to one. I was very surprised that neither team had contacted me as a secret ringer for them, but I had a great time going and watching anyway, and would invite everyone to, to attend next year.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Over the last month, I've had the privilege of attending five neighborhood meetings and came up with an interesting observation. The five neighborhoods are to be praised for going out and getting their people to come out. Windsor Hills had their neighborhood association meeting in a church on a Saturday. Mayor Holt was there to share some ideas with them. Meridian Hills had their neighborhood meeting at nighttime in a movie theater. Musgrave Pennington had theirs in a public school. Windsor Forest had theirs in a nonprofit facility. And Briarwood, a neighbor, opened up his house for the neighborhood association. Lot of ways to do it. The key thing, people coming together, communicating, coming up with common goals and objections, objectives. That's what'll make our city great. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Shadid?
Thanks for the acknowledgement. I mean, it might seem like a small deal, but we can't do the small deals, and we definitely can't do the bigger deals. Like estimates of 300 to 500 million straws a day used by, every day in, in America. Countries with a lot lower standard of living have somehow been able to achieve widespread adoption of paper, corn, and bamboo straws, so I think we can too. Thanks.
All right. Thank you all. We move on now to item 12, city manager reports, and there are a few today.
Right, but the only presentation we have scheduled is to have Chris Tatham from ETC who's here, and Chris has been before us a whole number of times, I don't know.
Just a few months ago.
Eight, 10, a number of times. And he is here to present our annual citizen survey.
Right. Mayor members of the council, it's great to be back. And this year, I actually have a lot of good news for you. The overall results have improved from last year, and I'll kind of walk you through exactly what we found. If you're not familiar with us, our firm, we're based in Kansas City. We have offices all over the country these days, and we do work overseas. And we really exist to help local governments get input from the average resident, the average person who doesn't show up to meetings like this, who's going about their busy lives and may not have a vested interest in the outcome of specific decisions, but they do care about city services and the priorities you set. We use the data from more than 800 communities across the country to give you benchmarks so you can actually assess how you're doing compared to national norms. And so I'll share some of those with you today. I'm going to walk through a similar presentation to what you've seen in the past, give you a little overview. The purpose and methodology has not changed a lot, and then I'll spend most of my time going through the highlights of this year's presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to ask at any time. The overall survey that we conducted has been very similar for about the past 10 years. It was designed to assess the delivery of core services to help you prioritize where you budget, how you communicate, and really how well you're doing at meeting citizen needs. Citizen expectations change from one period to the next, and what people expect today is far different than what they expected 10 years ago. is far different than what they expected 10 years ago. So a tool like this in many ways is kind of a well-health checkup to make sure that as you're delivering services, you know how those expectations are changing from one period to the next. Each time we conduct a survey, we administer it to more than 1,200 residents. Historically, we just did a random sample, we didn't monitor it by ward. The last two years, we've now made sure that we have at least 150 respondents from each ward, so that way the data that you're looking for, for your ward, is actually statistically representative of the residents who live there. It's not perfect results. This year we had 1,325 persons participate, it has a margin of error of about plus or minus 2.7%, which means if we did the survey 100 times, 95 times out of 100, you get the same results with about 3% or less. So it's very good for tracking trends over time. This is just a map that shows the distribution, it pretty much lines up with the density of the city's population. You can see as you get further out, some of the less dense areas have fewer respondents, but the overall distribution lines up really closely with the census estimates. In addition, when we look at things like gender, age, race, ethnicity, and other demographic factors compared to census estimates, the results for the survey line up very nicely. So with that, we feel very comfortable that the results are representative of the community. Here's the bottom line, so in case you've been through a lot of information, here's the takeaways that I thought were most significant. Number one, the overall satisfaction rating is up five percentage points this year, and we've seen a few years of declines. Perceptions of street maintenance in a number of areas have improved, and that's been one of your top areas. In addition, the overall perceptions of the rating of the city as a place to work and live remain among the very best in the nation, and I'll show you some of those comparisons in just a little bit. Your public safety ratings remain among the very best as well. The overall priorities have not changed, but you're starting to move in the right direction in a couple of those areas, and that's one of the reasons I think overall satisfaction is higher. And if you actually look through the details of the report, the majority of the items have actually improved from last year to this year, even though most of the changes are not statistically significant. When you look at perceptions of the city, one of my favorite indicators on here is whether or not residents think you're moving in the right direction. If you look at this chart, you'll see a number of things are in blue, white, and red. We have people rate things on a five-point scale, and that neutral rating that we call neutral, people don't actually say I'm neutral, that's kind of the third point on a five-point scale. It typically means they're okay. Concerns are when you get a lot of negativity, so if you see a lot of red on some of these charts, that's usually people are upset or have had poor service. But if you look at how the city is moving in the right direction, you'll notice that only 11% of the respondents gave negative ratings compared to 72% positive ratings, so almost seven to one, which really suggests that things are going well, and you'll see all of the areas that were assessed as a place to work, live, even if it was a place to visit, ranked very, very well. In addition, you'll notice that the overall equity of how people perceive where they live is pretty uniform throughout the city. One of the things that we've done on a number of maps is we've shaded the mean response for all the zip codes in the city, so you can kind of tell whether or not there's significant differences in one part of the city or the other. This map just shows how people rate the city as a place to live, and you'll see most of the city is in blue, a few places in dark blue, a couple places in neutral, but you don't have any orange or red areas, which would identify significant areas of concern. In addition, overall attitudes about the direction the city's moving are pretty strong throughout the city. You'll see to the north and east, a little bit lower, but the rest of the city you can see is all in blue. When it comes to some of the other things that we looked at the city, I want you to point your attention to the third item on this chart, which is the overall quality of city services. Only 8% of people surveyed gave negative ratings, and put that into perspective, 62% gave positive ratings. So for every person that doesn't like how the city's doing overall, there's actually eight people out there that think you're doing a pretty good job, and you can see all areas rate pretty well. I'll show you the trends in just a little bit. In addition, when it comes to the major categories of city services, this isn't a new chart, but I do want to point out that overall satisfaction with the condition of city streets went up 2% this year. It's not monumental, but it actually shifted a tide that we've seen for several years, and from 9% to 11% in a proportion is actually nearly a 20% increase in the number of people who are satisfied with streets. So all in all, things are looking very good this year, but you can see the top issues were the greatest negativity, code enforcement, traffic flow, public transit in streets are still the areas where people are most concerned, and even though the condition of streets is moving in the right direction, you still have three out of four people giving negative ratings. With that said, I don't want to minimize the public safety ratings at the top of the chart where you can see are rated very, very well. Your fire, ambulance, and police services all have over 20% of the respondents giving a five on a five-point scale. In addition, sometimes it's nice to just look at how do people rate specific services, and I just thought I'd highlight some of the maps for your public safety. You'll see that nearly the entire city is in dark blue, which means it doesn't matter where you live, just about everybody's very satisfied. You can see as you get a little further out from the core, a couple areas are more in the blue, but the ratings are very, very good for fire. In addition, for ambulance service, all but one zip code you can see is rated blue, or people satisfied are generally very satisfied. In police services, you can see rate fairly uniform throughout the city, but you can see a couple pockets that rate a little bit lower. But all in all, the city, as big as it is, it amazes me that you do such an equitable job delivering services. I mean, with the geographic coverage that you have to manage for a city of this size, oftentimes I'd expect a lot more inequity and a lot more significant differences than we find, so you're only to be commended on that. As far as how you stack up to other communities, this is what I said early on, as a place to live, as a place to work, and the direction that the city's going, residents of this community feel really, really good. Nationally, you'll take a look at populations of communities with more than 250,000, only 41% or four out of 10 residents feel like their community's moving in the right direction. Here it's 72%. So for a big community, you're substantially better off as far as the public attitudes of how you're leading and where the city is going, and you can also see you have a great competitive advantage against other communities of similar size, as both a place to live and as a place to work. You see it's comparable as a place to visit, and you can see compared to the national average, for large cities, you're definitely a better place to retire, though you're on average with communities in general. The other thing I want to share with you is just some of your individual service ratings. As I mentioned before, your public safety, particularly your fire services, really is setting the standard nationally. And the other piece that I pointed out before, but I think it's important to highlight each year, is you've got great employees. Overall customer service rating from city employees is at 57%. For the average community, it's just 47%. For the average large community, it's only 36%. So that doesn't mean everybody's happy when they interact with the city, but you're doing a much better job than both other large cities and just typical cities, which include small communities that don't nearly have the complexity that large cities do to deliver customer service. You work your way down, though, you will see transit, there's opportunities to do better, code enforcement, some of your traffic flow issues are on par with other cities, and you can see your effectiveness of communication compared to other large cities, you're doing much, much better, as well as police and your ambulance service when you compare to other large communities. So all in all, Oklahoma City's doing better, and you also outperformed other communities when you look how everybody did compared to a year ago with your 5% increase in your overall satisfaction rating. A couple other things just to highlight is utility services. In every single area we assessed, you rate significantly above the national and the large community average. Your bulk item pickup, you can see, is off the charts compared to others, and again, I just want to highlight the customer service here, which is such an important piece of your interaction with residents on a daily basis. You're at 69% when it comes to how your utility services interact with people, compared nationally to just 44 or 48% for other communities. As far as the overall satisfaction rating, this is a map of how people citywide rated overall satisfaction, and you can see it's fairly uniform, most of the city is in blue. You'll see a couple pockets as you get further away from the city tend to rate the city a little bit lower. There's a couple inside. The overall differences aren't dramatic, but you can see there are a few differences based on where people live and their overall attitudes toward the city, the city services. And as far as trends, there really weren't a lot of significant trends this year, but things leaned favorably. Two of the indicators that are most important on the survey, from my opinion, is what do people think about the direction the city's headed in, and what do they think about the overall quality of city services, and you can see both of those increased 5% compared to a year ago. Communication, availability of information about your civic center, music hall programs, recreation opportunities in your recreation center, also all improved significantly from a year ago. You can see the areas that decreased were landscaping and streetscaping along medians, that's probably because you're doing construction, that's typically something that occurs alongside the street improvements. You can see cleanliness of streets and other public areas often goes down as you make those improvements, so that's likely related. You can see the image in public transit also decreased slightly from a year ago. When it comes to the top priorities for investment, I'm not bringing in any new news this year. Number one priority is still the streets. You can see it's off the charts, more people pick it as a top priority than any other top three combined. Traffic flow is next to public safety, round out the top three, and if you actually look to where your opportunities to have the biggest impact for satisfaction enhancement, those are tied to not just your ratings and the importance, but the two items combined. That's what you see in this analysis here, where it actually takes into consideration both your performance or the satisfaction and how important these items are to residents, and you can see condition of streets and traffic flow continue to be at the top. Transit, code enforcement, and parks and recreation kind of round out your next tier of priorities as far as opportunities to improve satisfaction with the city. So to summarize things, this is generally a very good year, there's still tremendous opportunities for the city to do better, particularly in streets, but it looks like you're moving in the right direction. You continue to set the standard when it comes as a place to work, as a place to live, and people have a lot of confidence in the direction the city is currently headed, so I think that's great news for you from this year's survey. And continuing to address those issues of streets, traffic flow, and some of the other items that we've identified will be important to preserve that confidence in the future. So with that, Mayor, members of the council, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The problem, I don't know if I've missed this in years past, but in our booklet on page 28 is the annual household income of the respondents. Okay? I don't think this reflects the people of Oklahoma City. I don't think it's even close to reflecting the socioeconomic distribution of the people in Oklahoma City. Basically, a third of the people that you, that you surveyed make $100,000 or more.
A third of those who report the income. You'll notice this, some people do not report the income, and they tend to often be lower income classifications, but, but you're correct. It does tend to be inflated on a survey like this, oftentimes because people we know in this type of survey tend to overstate.
What percent reported, what percent didn't? I mean, you'd have to show me all that, but you have another 30% that's $60,000 to $100,000, so 60% of your respondents make $60,000 or more.
Not individuals, these are household incomes.
Household incomes. Okay, the poverty rate for a household, two, two parents, two kids, is $18,000, right? So 23% of the people in Oklahoma City live below the poverty rate, right? 23%, one out of four people. But you've got only 15% that are under $30,000 in a household. So you, you take a single person, poverty rate's like $12,000. Two people, it's like $16,000. Two people and two kids, maybe it's $20,000. But, so you basically double the poverty rate, right? And you still only have 15% of people. So what happens if you skew to where you basically have a survey of the affluent?
Well, a couple things.
If you have a survey of the affluent who have cars, or two cars or three cars, much more than the people that aren't being, well, then city streets might be more important to them than, say, public transit or...
If I could respond to that, that's actually a great point. One of the reasons we asked this question is so that we can actually do the very analysis that you pointed out. You'll notice that 15% or nearly 200 of the respondents are from the lower income category, and one of the things that we do, and it will be available to you, is you can actually look at differences by each of the income groups. And so that's important because we recognize that some of the lowest people, lowest incomes are the hardest to reach, may not be literate, may not respond, and so that's one thing that we've actually built into the design of the survey. The second thing that we take a look at is we actually compare how this distribution is the previous years. And so over time, we expect the upper income to go up a little bit, just because people earn more over time, but if you look at this distribution compared to last year and the years before distribution, it's fairly comparable, so the results of the survey from one year to the next aren't being changed because the sample distribution is somehow different. And any bias or underrepresentation that may exist, we take into account so we can actually look at the differences by income level. So one of the things that we do provide are those income stratas, so you can see how people at different income levels rate services. Typically, there have not been significant differences, which is why I haven't highlighted it to you in the past.
Well, I'm just not, I'm not sure your sample size is big enough. What's the total sample?
Well, we can, we do 1,325, and so for some communities where this is a big issue, we do over-sample, and those are, it's always a matter of resources because those groups that are...
But you always want your sample to reflect the underlying population.
They do.
So why not strive to have it reflect the socioeconomic status of the people of Oklahoma City?
Well, it actually does, if you look at it from...
You have a third of your respondents making more than $100,000 a year. You have one out of four people in this city living under the poverty line, I don't think they're, they're reflected here.
Well, I can just tell you that though that sample may be a little higher, two surveys like that, that's fairly common, and your concern can be addressed with additional resources. What we try to do is provide you the best research possible at the lowest possible cost. Many communities basically over-sample the lowest population groups, but what happens is the cost to reach those per survey is much higher. So rather than doing that, we have a stratification, so you can take a look at our low-income people, are their perceptions different than upper income? And if they are, we can actually show you that. Historically, they have not, and so in early years, I have not looked at the distribution this year, but I'd be happy to do that, so you can say, you know what, for people who earn lower levels, they prioritize this, but I can just tell you that if you look at the overall results, streets are the number one priority for every income group. They're pretty much the number one priority for everyone in the community when you have only 11% giving you positive ratings. And so part of the issue is to address those high-level concerns, and even though we may over or slightly underrepresent a group, the reason we have the demographics is so if you have concerns about renters versus people who own, you have concerns about Africans versus Hispanics, African-Americans or Hispanics, you can actually take a look at this data and make sure you can account for those differences. So we planned a lot of that into the survey.
So if somebody doesn't have a car, or they can't afford a car, you think condition of streets is still their number one concern?
Well, you're, most of the people, though you have a significant, we do a lot of survey research for you for your transit community. In fact, we're the number one transit research company in the country, so I understand people who don't have cars and their needs, but I also understand in order to reach those people, you have to do surveys very differently because they aren't available through normal channels that we use for this type of surveys. And you can reach those people, but the methods to make sure they're represented in proportion to average residents who have more resources costs a lot more money. And so we're able to do that, but we've stuck with this methodology for many years because it typically historically has given you the data.
Because it's cheaper, but it's not a, it doesn't...
I'm happy to charge the city more and do more. We've, the reality is, is we're trying to give you the best money, the best value for the buck, so...
Call it what it is, it's a survey of the affluent.
It, it, it's not when you, if you take the time, and this city's done a good job, and you actually break down the results for the different groups, you're really making sure every group's analyzed. When we do our assessment, we're looking at the differences by race, we're looking at the differences by income, we look at the differences even by gender. So those are the kind of things that we do behind the scenes. I don't present that all at this meeting, but the bottom line is the survey is designed so someone like you can say, hey, look, we've got too many people who have more income than we should. Well, that doesn't mean that under income, lower-income people's needs won't be addressed because we have the survey designed to analyze whether those differences are significant, and if they are, we'll let you know. Historically, they have not been that significant, but I can do a further analysis and deeper analysis to confirm that, if that would make you feel more comfortable.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see cross tabs of, of what the, on the chart that he's referencing, you know, what the folks in yellow and the folks in green, what their answers are, just broken out, and maybe also sort of ethnicity cross tabs as well.
In our newer tool that we're actually going to be presenting and inviting you to be part of, we've set it up with Dallas and some other large cities, is a new data analytics platform that allows you to have in real-time access all the data that you've ever collected over time, and you can literally look at it all remotely from an internet portal. It's pretty neat. We, we're going to roll it out next year, but I'll be talking to your folks on staff. It's, again, so the idea is to keep costs low, give you the best information possible with the resources that you have available.
Ed, excuse me, I'm going to divert just a little bit from the survey. Ed, excuse me, I'm going to divert just a little bit from the survey, but you bring up a point that I find extremely interesting, but at the same time challenging. So if 23% of our population is below the, makes income below the poverty line, you're talking in terms of 120,000 to 140,000 people to get to that percentage.
Of 650?
Yeah. Something like, yeah, I'm just saying, it could, it could fall in between 120,000 to 140,000. Given today's economic environment, I don't understand why those individuals couldn't move upwards. And what could the city do first to analyze what's preventing them from pulling themselves out of that category into a higher pain situation? And then secondly, once we understand those barriers, what could the city do to help eliminate those barriers? If there is anything that the city council could do that could have a tremendous impact on our city, I think identifying those issues and then hopefully coming up with a solution to help address those would have a tremendous impact on our city.
I agree 1,000%, and that's, David, why I think it's so important to include them in this. And what I suspect is that they'll, many will say, I can't get to a job. The public transit doesn't serve, I mean, there will be more problems with transit than is indicated. And I think transportation will be very high.
I think it'll be a component. I wouldn't want to say that's the only thing.
Right.
Especially in today's environment, when, because this has been tattered around throughout the country, there are more job openings currently than there are people looking for jobs. So it's a very tight job market. Great opportunity to help these individuals push themselves out of their current situation into a much higher pain environment. I mean, there should not be too many reasons why that we couldn't at least somehow address. I'm just saying that in an effort to encourage you to kind of lead that as a committee to see what we could do.
I agree. I think the first thing you need is data.
Data.
And that's what, so I'm asking you for help, you know, to try and make, just, I mean, I recognize that we've done it this way in previous years, but maybe we can look to make a more representative sample in the years ahead.
I can promise you, before I leave this building, I will be calling my office to put together that income analysis for you, and you'll have it by the end of the week.
I'm grateful.
And as we look forward, if we need to oversample or monitor the income, because that's an issue that you're practicing, I'll make sure that we do that.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? I see your finger on your microphone.
You're going to be around for a minute after the media.
I'll make one quick suggestion, easy way, but I think it's, considering all of the tax breaks and incentives that corporate America has gotten, to really think about what an increase in minimum wage would look like for Oklahoma City.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Cott.
All right, thank you. We don't have any presentations on the other three reports. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and items B, C, D, and E all have written reports available at our website at OKC.gov under the council agenda, correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions for the city manager under item 12? Seeing none, we're now at citizens to be heard. Item 13, we have Ronnie Kirk. Ronnie, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I live at 2328 North Missouri here in Oklahoma City. Everybody know I'm about gun control. Mr. Mayor, the book Emmanuel just gave you, that's the same one we gave Mick Cornett on his last day in office. Today, as we speak, last week, on ABC, they talk about a plastic gun can be generated by a computer. They admitted to selling 1,000 of the programs. That's what they admitted to. But anybody know, if they tell you they admitted to 1,000, at least 3,000 people got that out. A plastic gun is still a gun regardless what's made out of it. The plastic gun that they were trying to get everybody to start getting to create this AR-15, still need a chip in it. If it's produced, the manufacturers know who already got it. In a length of time, four days, on ABC, they told on a Friday, by Monday, they were trying to stop it, which they did. But these computers are so smart today, in four days' time, when people found out, when they were trying to stop it, believe me, they downloaded that app before the government stopped it. If a plastic AR-15, if they got it on a plane, untraceable, a plane with 300 or 400 people on it, would kill so many people. If they got the plastic gun into any kind of coliseum, untraceable, it still could kill the people. So even though it's a gun, it still need that chip put in it. The ones that already got it, it needs that chip. The technology we have today, they can do this here. I care about all people, not just the people on Northeast Community. If the information in this booklet I gave Mr. Hall, it tells everything I did all my life. I've been to city council meeting ever since 1992. I come every year. I'm still coming today. But this gun that everybody, they want to make a plastic gun, Oklahoma, we need to, when I came to on March 27th and told about the chip being put in a gun, we need to get with the senators, and we all work together, and we try to stop this. Oklahoma needs to be first on something during that. I come down there all by myself, me and my grandson. We can't do this by ourselves. We need the senators to work with us, the council to work with us. We just need to work for Oklahoma. We need to work for all the citizens, not just the few of them. If they get this, if you watch those meetings I have on the back of the cards, it tell you that these chips need to be put in these guns. Once sooner or later, it's going to come to this. I don't want to be right about something like this here, but I know it's possible and it's going to happen, but we don't want it to happen at all when we got somewhere of trying to get it stopped. A gun is a gun regardless what it's made out of. That's what I come to say this morning.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk.
Hello, everyone. I'm Emmanuel Larray Norman, and I just wanted to tell everyone, I'm 11 years old, and this is my fifth city council meeting, and I wanted to tell you one that my grandpa is training me to be a community server with all you guys.
Thank you. I don't think in my four months, we've had any children addressed to council, and today we had two. That was nice. Okay, that concludes, is there any other citizen who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, we will now retire to executive session. We had several votes earlier to consider several items. We will be back and also for potential consideration of item 9 and 1.